Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Town of Norfolk Planning Board Meeting, July 15, 2013. It's a little past 7:30 PM. Please be advised that this meeting is video and audio taped. The first piece of business tonight is an update from our DPW, Bob McGee, regarding sidewalks, et cetera. Bob, since no one's up here, do you want to join us up here tonight?
Can I just share this one here? I think it's been here before, so.
Greg doesn't say.
Thanks. We have, for some time now, talked about the replacement of the brick sidewalks that have been deteriorating through the town. It's gone back and forth and done quite a bit of research on it. And it's no news to anybody here that we've decided to go with corbels. I've got your blessing on that. Got the selectmen to agree on it. And what we wanted to do was, because there's an existing condition, and it's not just new construction, it's tearing down the brick and using some of the base that's already existing, the flush granite curb going across the street. And we thought that if we could find out, you know, exactly how that was constructed, not only by examining the drawings, the proven stuff like that, but actually getting out there. Before you make an investment into, you know, $100,000 worth of sidewalk, or whatever the figure is fictitiously there, but we needed to do some test bits. So we took our crew and we went out in four different spots. We extracted some brick, took the asphalt from underneath it, and went down to the solid base that, all these things that we expected to find, but never knew how much tolerance there was between the concrete base and the top of the street, or the top of the flush granite, which is also the same. We found it to be about four, four and a quarter inches. So the traditional corbel that we had gone over and, I was a little excited to use, isn't, is too thick. So what we had to do is, because you need to get a little base of concrete underneath that, and the four-inch corbel by eight, you know, the typical ones that we see in Boston and so forth, wasn't going to do it because I need to get that concrete underneath it. So, but I did stumble across, and I even talked to people from Belgium, this corbel that we have out there now. It's a bush hammered finish. It's ADA compliant. It's only three inches thick. It's square six by, six inches by six inches, and it will, it'll handle the strength of concrete trucks and garbage trucks and all those things out there. And, excuse me?
Plows.
Plows, yeah. It's not that plows are heavy. It's, well, they are, but it's that blade in the front with the salt. But nothing's going to destroy the finished work on a corbeled stone. So I thought it was a good idea to, before we, you know, ask for the money, is to get one done. And we have. I think, I don't think it's, again, any surprise to anybody that we had one done out there. And we're going to strip away the detour signs and let that be traveled on tomorrow. But it came out pretty nice, I think, and it was our first one. So with that, what I've learned now is that I can write a set of specifications, identifying the concrete, the concrete mixture, the thickness of the concrete, you know, the corbels, and also, and probably more importantly, the way it's installed. In other words, a car traveling down the street travels on the travel path. And there's plenty of road where cars just don't touch down a lot. In the crosswalk areas, you can see that there's an island that breaks up the crosswalks for the walking path and so forth. Cars never go through there. So when you're putting together, I'll just, I'll try to do this as quickly as possible, and, you know, I think you'll understand, is that I need some cure, we need some cure time for this. So that when I write this, when we write the specifications, we're going to make sure that whoever gets the work, when they start it, they're not going to start it at 2:00 in the afternoon and break it somewhere in the middle of the travel path where all that down pressure, some trucks and stuff. They start here and they're going to be able to finish it and at least get half done, or totally off the travel, the ridden part of the road. So we can have that, so we don't have cold joints, so that when we're mixing mortar and as we move along, it's all kind of like one strenuous effort. So that's just an example of what we learned by putting that one down there. And I hope that you've all had a chance to take a peek at it. It's going to be there for quite some time, so you will be able to take a peek at it. But what I'm here for tonight is, having installed this, one crosswalk in now with, I believe there's another 10 to go, and then we have the rumble strips that are going around the roundabouts, I've asked the selectmen if they would approve a project request for the cost, for 50% of the cost, to do a Phase 1, and Phase 1 just being the crosswalks. We'll leave the rumble strips out for maybe next year. So what I'm here with the planning board is, is saying if the, and it's right here in my recommendation, that if the, and we have a Chapter 90 approval out there for $50,000 right now, if the planning board would approve the release of some funds from the sidewalk off mitigation, off-site mitigation account, in the amount of $38,000, because the price estimates that I've been getting to do the sidewalks are roughly around $88,000, which I think is a great price, by the way.
I mean, we've obviously kicked this sidewalk corbel brick issue to death over the last couple of years. I guess I have, first question I have, Bob, is the Chapter 90 request for $50,000, is that money that you already have? It should have been released by the select?
It's not money that we have. It's, I've, it's with the state right now. The selectmen approved it, signed it. We sent it off to the state and they have an approval process. And I think we're batting like $1,000, if you want to know the truth. So, and I called the head, so I know that there's not going to be a problem with that. At least, you never know, but I don't think there's going to be a problem with that.
Okay. Secondly, is, of the 10 sidewalks and rumble strips that you mentioned, are these sidewalks inclusive of anything inside this subdivision?
Not at all, no.
Okay, so that-
That will be new construction, by the way.
Yeah.
So that's, that's going to be separate money?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Short of-
The second page gives you a breakdown of what I'm asking for.
I did, I did see that. I guess-
Does this cover the installation of the rumble strips next year as well?
No, not at all. This is Phase 1. Kind of, if you read the recommendation, it kind of will say your words for you, but there's a little background on it. So like I said, in this package, you'll see the second page is a breakdown. Third page is just a, not that you need proof, but it's a typical Chapter 90 project that gets filed with the state. This is just a copy of one, unsigned, but I can assure you what is signed with the selectmen and in the mail. And the fourth page is proof that, in a balance sheet, for what is in the off-site account.
That's the sidewalk fund.
Yes.
That's the balance.
I do believe, right?
So this is our, this is our sidewalk account here?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, and that's under the purview of the planning board?
Right. I wasn't sure. When you approve subdivisions and you approve an order of conditions and you put that money aside in the off-site account, I'm thinking I'm doing the right form, going through the right formality. Does it, is it money that belongs to the town and governed by the selectmen at this point, or does it need a vote of approval?
I thought it was governed by the planning board.
It would probably be spent if it was handled by another board. No, it's, it's a planning board account.
Good.
Okay.
And we're here doing the right thing, okay.
So I guess, anyone else want to chime in here, folks?
Bob, you had mentioned you got quotes for $88,000?
I get quotes for, I get kind of like two quotes that I put together, the cost of buying the materials and the cost for labor.
Yep.
And the three quotes that I got were around $10,000, a little bit less for each one. The way we propose to do this, Michelle, is the, not going to stop life in the town's center. We're going to do one at a time. And if we can, maybe do one a week. So this is tougher than chess. I just don't know how I'm going to make my way around town. And we're going to do it. And there's going to be some inconveniences. I've been already talking to the store owners and so forth. But if you can try to imagine what detours are going to be like, it's not like we can do 50% of one and then maybe go up and do 50% of another one. It's going to require either plates or a total shutdown, plates meaning road plates. And if we have road plates, they need to be suspended so they don't, it doesn't touch down on the mortar and just, you know, that mortar just has to be left alone. So the seal isn't broken and stuff.
I'm just trying to understand the magnitude of the total project, because this year we would be funding $88,000. And I think you said next year it would bring it up, the total would be 148. So the delta would be $60,000 you'd have to look for next year?
Exactly.
And do you think that would come completely from the sidewalk fund, or do you think there'd be another opportunity for some 90K money?
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90 money?
Haven't thought that far.
See, okay.
We could probably be looking for-
But you think the initial 88 would get all the crosswalks and it would only leave the rumble strips?
I think so.
Undone?
I think so.
If it goes according to what you're thinking? I know there's some-
Yeah, there, you know, there's, yeah, I think it will. I get, you know, I price this by the square foot. That's how it comes out. So I go out and do a takeoff.
So the reason I'm asking is, because let's just say next year, that money, whatever, isn't around. Are we putting ourselves in a position where we're kind of half doing things and it's going to look silly, or can we do enough, like you were saying, of at least complete the crosswalks and if for some reason we couldn't get to the rumbles? You know, it's not going to look like we kind of quit halfway through, you know?
I think it's a risk that, you know, I'm not worried about and probably knowing how we do things, it won't be a risk. But I can tell you this, you really have no choice. Because the bricks have fallen apart. They're becoming a liability.
Yeah.
So it's-
And from a practical standpoint, as we all know, this time of year, Norfolk Center is dead, dead, dead. If you're going to do it, you have to do it now.
This is kind of, this project here, I guess you could call this a classic capital project, if you wanted to. The town is, you know, economics haven't been that great, and this is one way to get it done. You've done your job. There's a planning board. You've given us money. You've put it aside. It's no good in the bank. Let's do it.
So along those lines, just in terms of timing, that type of process, you know, that request for Chapter 90 funds, how long does that normally take to-
I might know by Friday.
-feedback?
Oh, quick.
Right. And they say, you know, the girl, you get, you get to know them after years down at the, you know, the Taunton office, and they give you a verbal and say you're going to almost start ordering your materials, because they never let you down after that. But comes right back.
Who actually makes that decision? Just from my education, curious as to how they would.
There's a, we're in District 5, and we're located, we're governed, the state responsibility, our responsibility is given to that section, that state section out there. I don't know how many districts there are. And then everybody has to go to-
Six.
Is it six? And I think we're in District 5, so it's out of town. And then from there, it goes into Boston. And pretty much Boston stamps, they let District 5 really make the big decisions. If they get questions, they do. But it's just never failed me to go down there. And I'm talking some 20 years of, you know, not that long, but of doing Chapter 90 funds.
So the Chapter 90 funds, they're approved by the legislature, and then in terms of how they're spent, that's done more locally by, in these districts that you've just described?
Well, it's, you know, the governor tells you how much you're going to get. And then, you know, they, there's a formula for how much the towns get. And then there's criteria. If you look up Chapter 90, there's, you can't spend it on fishing gear, you know. There's things that you can spend it on, there's things that you can't. We could even buy a front-end loader if we wanted to. They allow you to do it. There's a discipline, though. You don't want to do that. It's not, you don't spend it like that. It was designed in the beginning. Actually, if you want to go back here, it was designed for state roads. And the state felt that they couldn't actually do the work themselves, so they gave it to the towns, and they asked the town to do it. And then it expanded and expanded, and it opened up. And now it's our greatest source for, these days especially, for road construction.
Yeah, road funding, right.
You've got to be careful what you use it on.
Right.
Just one more question. In terms of material construction, so you've got basically the mortar that these sit in. And in terms of between the cobblestones, what do you use between the cobblestones?
Well, first of all, just try to imagine there's, there's an existing eight-inch wire reinforced, steel reinforced, concrete slab under there from when they first constructed it. That remains. The, it's not mortar that goes under the corbel right now. It's a cement. And they do it wet enough where it just turns color. There's some great YouTube videos on this stuff. And so, so that's like a two-to-one mix, or a two-and-a-half-to-one mix, or maybe even a three-to-one mix, depending on the thickness of it. We can only afford to put an inch to an inch and a half in. So it's a two-to-one mix that we're using.
That's what concrete to sand or something like that?
One sand, two shovelfuls of concrete, one shovelful of sand. And what goes in between that will be the mortar. And the mortar is done dry. It's spread on the top after the brick's placed, and it's strung out, and there's, you know, the pitches are right, and, you know, you know you got it in there. And it's tapped with a hammer so that there's just enough moisture so this thing will suck up around the sides of the corbel. And the corbels, because they're irregular, they're just about touching, but there's enough space everywhere that if you keep working it and so forth, that they sweep the mortar mix on the top. They dump it on the top like a powder, sweep it in, sweep it in, work it in, then hose it down, do it again, do it again. And if you look out there right now, it's going to be a fourth time, because there are still some crevices that you can still see there. And you want to get them, you know, uptight, watertight, and then-
Get the moisture out, right?
Right.
So it's not freezing there.
You want to keep from cracking. Obviously, water will get through the cracks and so forth. And then we might even look into sealing them once a year.
Yeah.
So there's going to be a maintenance with this, too. Nothing, not replacement maintenance, hopefully, but it'll be maybe just a repointing type thing, because salt eats concrete, doesn't eat corbels.
Mom, what would be the ongoing cost?
I don't know, Pete. I think in-
So we're basically talking about $9,000 a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, is it 10% of that? Is it half that?
Just, let's just take a guess, because, you know, my heaviest experience is not in masonry. It's, I mean, I've done concrete a lot, but this is masonry. I think that maybe every three years that we need to spend $5,000 to go out and stand blast it and have somebody come in and sweep and point it, that kind of thing.
Okay.
You know, I'm guessing. And if it's $10,000, forgive me, but it certainly isn't $50,000.
But that's for all of them, though?
Yeah, right. We'll come down, we'll probably do it at night and stuff like that. And it's not, then you don't have to create your detours and stuff. We might do it overnight, and it'll set up in the morning and stuff like that. But this is in the joints. It's-
Right. I mean, we just don't want to be five years down the line and living with the headache again. I'd rather see the preventive maintenance.
It's my biggest fear.
Right.
Can't do it a third time.
Can't go through the choice of cobblestones a third time. We've been doing this for two years. But it does look great. Really does.
Yep.
So I guess, yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm set. I'm set.
Just a related question. The process here for getting specification written, is that something that, you know, you'll do with the resources at the DPW?
Yes.
Do you need any assistance from, you know, the resources? I apologize if I'm overstepping in my bounds. But, you know, because this is related to the stop and shop discussions that I think we've really wanted to have, but we really needed that specification to really have a point of negotiation with them. So, you know, if anything that we can do, and I would think we'd be interested in doing it to try and move that along, so that we can try to put this whole issue behind us.
I'm under the impression that he has the specs set, and always looking for his money, hopefully from the state by Friday, and the other 40% tonight from us. Am I correct? So.
I think what you may be talking about is, the specification I'm talking about, it's kind of like not, not much more than what I'd put out there for a quote. It is, I just gave it to you.
I think it's fine, though. If we could get it in, just that in writing, I think it's fine.
Just something official, so that, I mean-
That's fine.
But when you go out here and you do new construction, that, this is a whole different set of specifications. Similar, but different. And we're talking about excavation, compaction, reinforced concrete. We're going to build it up to what's existing out there right now. So a little bit more money for what we're talking about here.
So maybe that's the essence of my question, then, if you need any support to take it to that level. I mean, I know you have access to engineers and such through the DPW, but, you know, whatever we can do, I would thank to move the whole thing along.
I really don't need help with the specs.
Okay.
And if it's, if you did have a concern, I'd ask PSC to look at it, just for, like, so I'm using the right nomenclature, or make sure my-
I mean, I think you and your people are experts. All right. It's, it's fine, as long as, I would think we get something in the not-too-distant future, because we do have the outstanding bond issue, and we want to make sure that thing doesn't expire. We don't have any issues in terms of enforcing these requirements with stop and shop.
Right. But I think, I'd rather keep the discussion of what's on the table here tonight, though. That one, it's a whole separate topic.
It's a related conversation, though.
Yeah, but it's nothing I want to expand in, because we have a tight agenda tonight.
I think we're done.
Okay. Greg, you all, okay?
Good.
Okay. Bob, you also had another issue for us tonight?
I do. I just, one that-
Should we close this one out with a, with a motion, though?
If you want to. I mean, it's-
If you read the recommendation, you could take a vote, just by reading this. But whatever you think, you know, before I move on to a different subject.
All right. I will entertain a motion to, for the planning board to vote to approve the release of funds from the town's off-site sidewalk account in the amount of $38,000 towards funding the crosswalk construction in the town center. Do you have a problem with us making only contingent on Chapter 90 participation?
Sure.
Okay.
So contingent.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay.
Contingent on the Chapter 90.
Yeah, we don't want to give out the $38,000 unless we're going to get the whole deal.
No, I agree.
So, Walter?
Seconded.
You're second?
You're second? You're moving?
I get moved.
It's not like he-
I moved.
You moved?
I'll second it.
There we go.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, thanks.
Second subject, if I can, and I'll try to be brief with this. You, Jeff, probably, and both you and Peter, have greater knowledge of this, because this predates me. This behind me is a, an approved drawing attached to River's Edge as part of their mitigation. I don't know how different to say it. But anyways, as this was approved, and I think after it was studied by the former director, he maybe saw some problems with this. I really don't know. But he solicited a design engineer to come up with another set of drawings, and that's sitting in a closet. I reviewed this with my town administrator. We have an engineer in my office. We looked at it. And I talked to Placido Corp. The good news, the good news in, the good news is that they're willing to build this. They're willing to pay to get it built. It's already approved. I think what I'd just like to tell you is, it's coming. Unless you have some questions, or maybe some of the board members that aren't familiar with the project, you could even give a better history, Peter, than I could. This is part of River's Edge.
Well, yeah, that approval was probably prior to me being on the board. But what we're talking about is, as you come down 115 north from the center of town towards Millis, and if you notice, there's, on the right side, just before you get to the Village River's Edge, there's always been that gravel cut through going up. That's Holbrook, I believe.
Holbrook Street, yeah.
And there's also like a failing intersection, that shootout on the same intersection. That's the first piece. There's actually two pieces involved here.
There's the gravel piece, and this is the one coming up from Pin Oaks towards Route 115.
And then the next one is, as you travel past the Village River's Edge gate, you'll come up to that next intersection for the continuation of Holbrook Street, which I definitely consider that to be a future major traffic accident if we don't address it. And I think, Bob, if you point out how you're going to rectify how the turns off of Holbrook Street are going to come to a 90, as they should, you know, as opposed to people coming up now, you know, they come in at an angle and they never slow down. If you're coming 115 south, say, from 109 and Millis or something, this is very dangerous. And until we get to, yes, people will have to re-educate themselves, because they'll actually be stopping while someone waits to take the true left at that point. I'm just shocked that we haven't had a bigger disaster there, you know, especially when you have things like gravel trucks. Tresca always going, you know, anywhere he does business on that side of the area, things like that. And I'm surprised that we haven't had accidents. And I'm thrilled that, you know, Tom DePlacido, and Bob, you could find a way to make this thing happen.
Yeah, really no tricks here. Just to let you know what you're looking at. And if you're coming from, say, Millis, and you're coming up Holbrook Street Extension, I call it, that's how I've known it. This being Route 115 going towards Millis, this being Route 115 going towards Norfolk Center. This entrance is there, but it's not developed. This, all the improvements to this road going in, they're spelled out here. There'll be a rock wall and whatever beautification he puts on here. But more importantly to the town is, the traffic coming up here, taking a left towards Millis will come up and stop at a 90-degree angle to the street, perpendicular to the street. People going this to the right, and this is what some people didn't like, and this is what I love, is that people coming up here that can take a right on this street have a great advantage. They can actually see and maybe get, you have, you know, like a rolling stop. Maybe they can, you know, if you got ice and you got a car coming down and you know how you're sitting there, do I get out, do I wait? And sometimes you get some indecision. The person coming out here can, you know, maybe come to a rolling stop and then just, you know, go along. It's a little bit of an incline there. So that's what that is. The design is simple and it's free.
Stop sign-
Yes, I was going to say the same thing.
Stop sign for the left turn, and stop sign for the right turn.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, then traffic coming up here.
So not a yield sign, stop sign?
Right. And it shouldn't be a yield.
It's described as a yield.
And there's a small island, is that correct?
It did describe it as a yield, so maybe I should strike that. But I just know, I'd rather live than be perfect, you know?
But as long as the stop sign is there, the behavior is a behavior, but the intention is for stop sign.
I actually consider the traffic coming the other direction, shooting in this way, even more dangerous, you know, than even this way.
Turning on to Hol-
Turning on to, say, if you were heading from here back to Pin Oaks, you know, because that-
Then they're taking a left onto-
Well, it's not even a left. It's kind of a-
That's the biggest deal. So they'll come down here and they'll just, they'll see that there's plenty of room, so they'll just step on the gas a little quicker. Over here, they're going to pay attention to a left-hand 90.
Right.
Turn.
So there's an island involved, right? I saw the electronic version, yeah.
That's what I was looking at, too.
About how big is that, Bob, that island?
It's, I'm, you know, going to guess it's like 10, 15 feet. Maybe the size of this table right here.
Could it be signed like the one at Boardman off of Main Street, where it has the arrow? They have to go around the island to turn left, you know, right near York Park?
Yeah, that would probably be a very similar type of intersection, because you have, you're bearing off to the HOD, or you're coming to a stop to take a left to downtown.
Right.
I was just going to say, I, I'm, yes, it's not something that you could read here, but it's probably something that we'd insist on, and it just comes as a reflex that you put that kind of, you know, that kind of directional thing there, you know? This here is the existing, this here is existing. It's done. It's nice. It goes into DePlacido. I'm not here selling DePlacido's property, but it seems like everything this developer touches is first-class. You can see that in his work here, and I'm glad that he's doing the work for us. Over here, it was proposed to widen the street here. Again, this was something that I looked at, and I'd like to take out of the plans and not do it. I've got a verbal only from Tom, that if there's a need to do this, it can't just be a four-foot width widening. It's got to go out a little bit more. By adding this thing here, it could even possibly ask for problems. So nothing's changed, except that we'd prefer to take this road widening out at this point here. Can't get by it. Don't want to try to get by it. And people are going to try to get by it. So they're just going to have to come up behind a car and slow down and stop and behave, and so.
But that's it. Can you show the actual intersection we're talking about at the opposite side of Holbrook? Because that's the internal gate, too.
Right here.
Right.
Right. I was going to just get to that. Okay.
Okay.
So that's the deal there. And, but over here, I think you're all, this here is maybe one side or the other of this. Right now, I'm just, I think it's up here?
Right.
Down here a little bit?
South of the-
Very close to it. I mean, you could throw a football from there to there.
Opposite side of the street, south.
Yep.
Right.
So this is coming up, this is going towards Norfolk Center. That's going towards Millis. And this right here now is all gravel. And it's, it's heavily used. I mean, buses use it and so forth, but it's, it's not a good situation. Gravel sometimes can freeze worse than pavement. And I see buses and everybody trying to get out of here. Or some people go up here, and maybe they should take a left and go that way or this way. So this is going to get fully developed. This is the common sense smart plan, a grass island in the middle. So cars coming up here will have a stop line, stop sign, that rolling stop theory. You need to go. And then here again, it's the same situation as this. So if you're coming down here and you're taking a left, you kind of square off at a 90-degree angle, and the same going, you know, when you come out, so.
Right. So no matter what, they have to slow down and take the left off of 115.
The whole concept will add to safety. I don't-
Again, Bob, stops on both of those, stop signs on both, yeah, okay.
One question, Bob, is the grade on that gravel side, is there going to be a correction on that?
There will be, right. You just can't come up and expect it. You've got to kind of come up and level off a little bit earlier.
It's pretty radical right now.
Yeah, it is. It's like that, and then you can't take off. So I think we'll, coming up here, the grade will start to come up here a little bit.
Okay.
So, that's it. That's what's been pretty much approved. And I, it's been so long that I thought, and I thought I saw it in a meeting, or heard in a meeting, or Betsy was telling me, that people have been inquiring about this. And I think we have a window of opportunity. I don't want to see that window shut.
That's a huge, that's a huge one.
Bob, what was the argument to widen the, the street there at the entrance?
If you come down here and you- If you come down here and you see that you've got a little bit of space, and maybe I should go, and maybe I shouldn't go, well, if you miss, you're gonna go down into a tree, and it could be tragic. So we're all thinking, you know, all the people that I talk to, and I'm not a design engineer, but I kinda agree that you come up and you and you don't take advantage of any opportunity. You just, you wait your turn, and if there's a cop pulling in, you slow down, and that's it. If it means that later on that this isn't working out, and I hope it isn't later on because we've learned from tragedy, we'll widen it, but we'll do a better job than four feet. We'll go full car length.
Understood.
I think there's also, not so much at the new intersection with the high grade there, but up closer to Tommy's entrance, wasn't there con-con issues? Bob, I think you were probably on the board back then. I think it's just, I think if you're adding into there and you're going that direction, you're opening up, it can't work.
Yes, yes, sir. That's not driving my thought process, N O Is and all that. You gotta do what you gotta do to save lives, but that's, if that is, you're right, that will come with this.
But the fishing game, you know, the fishing club was very nervous about their ponds. They have some incredible ponds back there, and, you know, they weren't obstructionist by any means, but they were very, very concerned through that whole process, I remember.
It may be a little further down. I'm not sure.
I can't, I can't visualize it.
Yeah, but there were. You're right, but it may be further down. Could you talk a little bit about the sidewalk plan that's integral to this?
Well, there is a, at best a handshake plan to continue sidewalks from overlay. Is that the one you're talking about, Jeff? Overlay all the way up on this side here?
On the northbound side?
Are you talking about part of this development?
I believe on the electronic plans that I looked at, I thought that I saw sidewalks, but maybe they, whether they were there to be constructed as part of this project.
Where, on Holbrook or Route one fifteen?
On Holbrook.
Okay, so you're talking going down to Pin Oaks?
Not necessarily all the way down to Pin Oaks, just in the vicinity of this intersection. I'm not sure I saw anything going further down towards Pin Oaks.
I don't know if that, why that might not show a sidewalk, but I'm pretty sure that there is a sidewalk coming down at the cost of this project here. Don't hold me to it because, but I thought that there was, because there's a sidewalk going all the way here, and this continues, this being the match line would be here, and there's a sidewalk that goes down here. I don't see it identified on here, but. If that's what you're talking about.
Well, I know that we've got an interest in doing something with sidewalks further down Holbrook. So just in terms of the vision of what we do here and how that would mesh with what, you know, I think we need to do at some point. Just looking at the vegetation and such, I mean, it's right up to the road. I mean, so anybody walking on that road, Holbrook, is, you have to walk.
So you must be talking down here, right, on this side of the street?
Further down, but just so that, you know, there's a plan, a comprehensive plan. So whatever we do here, it makes sense in terms of what we do there.
I know that there was talk of sidewalk joining up Pin Oaks, on Holbrook, sorry, Pin Oaks to River's Edge. There's not a lot of room there, but with a little creativity, this, you can have that meandering sidewalk type of thing just off a road, so you don't have to take down a tree here and there. You can go behind it. I, you know, maybe that's what we're talking about.
Well, also, you have, what do you have, seven or nine lots that we just approved in our plan? So it'd probably be something that would need to coordinate with Tom because, and I agree with you, that section that connects, without going into the village, Pin Oaks just, you know, on Holbrook proper.
I thought part of River's Edge, though, he was supposed to have a sidewalk that came out onto Holbrook.
But this is for people that wouldn't be cutting into.
Right, but I thought it was that and then connected in, I thought, but maybe I'm mistaken.
We saw two different iterations. The second one became in A and R plans, so it didn't have that detail.
This is, I'm sorry I didn't see it. I had to put these on, but this is a sidewalk.
That's what I thought when I looked at it. I wasn't sure either.
So he's showing, then this is the plan he agreed to build?
Yes.
Okay, so then he is adding sidewalk.
Right, I didn't know if we were coming down here because there's the need down here.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about is after the, after that.
Yeah, I mean, separate, separate project, but I just wanted to make sure that the vision is, you know, comprehensive in terms of how we're approaching it. That's all.
Okay.
Bob, did police chief look at these at all, weigh in at all for safety?
Way back when. I'm pretty sure he did. I can't speak for the chief, but he's always been.
Do we know if he was part of the impetus to redesign?
I would have to believe that, you know, because maybe it's going back probably ten years, maybe even longer now, but we had a fatality down there, some woman with her cellphone. I think it was even, was it a Tresca truck that, I mean, she got.
I don't remember.
She, so that's always been on our minds down there for, for traffic. And you know what? I think we're gonna have a few rear renders until people re-educate, because that's a fast area.
I know your question is more design-related.
Well, yeah, I mean, I know at one point the other director wanted to change the design direction, which I just didn't know if he wanted to change it because he got some feedback from other parties, or was it really just kind of his thing? And so it was just whether or not the police was part of that, you know, hey, I don't like something, let's redesign it, or if he was okay with this as well? Because it sounds like.
Double check that.
Okay.
But I hate to throw a kibosh on this.
But this is more of a, kind of a FYI for us, too, because we really don't approve this. We appreciate you coming in.
We did approve it.
Approval as part of the original.
Right.
Plan for Village River's Edge.
Right.
Right, but once we get out into the state road, though, I mean, it's really not under the purview of the planning board anyways.
Well, it's, you know, it's a state road, this, you know, but the work isn't on the state road. It's just abutting it. So other than notification, they're never gonna be an obstacle on something like this, but.
Okay.
I think Anderson.
So this was the approved plan by the planning board, so we really don't need to take any action because we've already approved it. Otherwise, perhaps there would have been a minor modification or something. I'm not, I don't wanna speak for you, Peter, but I think that's, if I understand correctly, that's.
I guess that's a question. Should we look at the new set of design, or is this the only one we ever?
I would say, you know, what I guess at the opening remarks, Bob said there was a second iteration of this, but he actually liked this one better. And who are we to recreate the wheel with Bob putting all the time and energy in, and we have someone that's willing to pay and build it?
Yeah, jeez, it's a win-win.
The.
Bob.
The more you raise that point, the more I worry. Somebody gets hurt, then Bob's idea and stuff. So I'm gonna research what you asked.
Look at the signatures on the signature blocks, see what planning board members approved it.
In terms of that, the difference between this set of plans, which the planning board approved, and the set of plans that are in the closet, aside from the four-foot width at that, at the entrance there, are there any other major differences that, between that set of plans and the closet and this?
I don't wanna say anything to sell this because I'm pushing this one here. So why don't, why don't I just give you an opportunity to take a peek, and I don't have the answer for you right now. It's like I forgot. I did see it before. There is some difference and some changes. There's, maybe this is eliminated here or something like that. I can't remember. Maybe this whole street comes out to here, and then it's that way. And I think that's, I think I'm pretty sure that that's what it is, that this has been eliminated. This comes out to here. There's, you know, specifications for, you know, you know, some more vertical curbs and walks or something. I'm not sure.
And just for the record, you know, there were two developers down there at the time, the Pin Oaks as well as the Village, and the money got mistakenly released by a past administration. You know, for Tommy to step up and do this, I think it's a huge win for us.
Yeah, is there a reason why he has committed to this plan but not the redesign plan, or is he?
Well, it's probably some financial.
Okay.
I mean, I, one of the things I do remember was a more expensive plan.
Okay.
And we paid money to have it designed, so. Before I was here, I just, more than that.
Are you, are you looking at any type of implementation date?
I can tell you that before the snow flies, this should be complete.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
No matter what gets on there, it's gonna be an improvement. I'll tell you that.
That's it.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave that up here if you don't mind, and grab it tomorrow.
All right.
Okay. That's great, Bob. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Sidewalks look great, too. Okay. You know, so guys, now at seven forty-five, we have a continued public hearing for Pondville Plaza, corner of Pine and Valley Streets, site plan review with Dover Land Surveying.
Shall I read the public hearing announcement?
No, it's just a continuance. It's only one on the opening of the public hearing, Walter.
Okay, yep.
Evan, you got something to bring up?
After the last meeting, there was, there was some revisions and recommendations by multiple parts of the zoning board. The zoning consultant. At the last meeting, there was several comment letters from different consultants to the town. Basically, we went through the entire list from everyone involved, and to the best of our ability, we revised the plans to meet all the recommendations or revisions that were asked for. The one issue that we, after a long thought, was, there was a question about moving the dumpster area. And we just really couldn't find a spot that was convenient to move it to without losing parking area. And so we ended up leaving that where it is, and we've added on hours for pickup, which I just received a comment letter from P S C Consultants this morning concerning their review of the revisions, and their comment was that the hours of pickup will conflict with traffic flow. And so we're gonna have to revise those hours, because we had them early in the morning and late in the afternoon. So we're gonna have to make them mid-morning to try and avoid traffic conflicts out on me.
Are you, are you anticipating multiple trips per day?
No. We just wanted the flexibility. They could either come in the morning or come in the afternoon.
Okay.
You know. As far as the roadway accessing into the property, there was an issue as far as the grading. Their recommendation was to bring the road in at two percent and then work from there. The issue we had was the original roadway was at six percent through the entire, through the entire length from the right away up to the upper area was at six percent. And what we did is we softened the roadway at the front hole in the existing back a walk and brought it in at four percent. I couldn't get it down to two because otherwise you wouldn't have been able to contain the drainage adequately.
How far, how far in is four fifteen?
It goes in about thirty feet. And then from there, it kicks up to six percent up through these parking areas, and then it steepens up to eight percent until you get up to the top, and up in the top, it's all at one to two percent slope in there. The other issues on the utilities, there was an issue concerning the water line and gas line being too close. Those have now been made ten feet apart. As far as going under the patio, there really is no option of where those lines can come in. However, that patio is probably gonna be a blocked patio, not a poured concrete patio. But we are proposing to sleeve the pipes under the patio. And there's also a note that where the sewer force main crosses the water line, both lines must be sleeved ten feet each direction per the state code. Otherwise, it was, the only other issue was the air conditioning units and the noise level at the property line. It's hard to imagine this, but those air conditioning units are gonna be on the first level, which is, which ends up being surrounded on two sides by retaining walls almost ten feet high. And then you've got the building with a, with a walkway for an emergency exit above it. And then on top of the wall, there's gonna be a row of evergreens with a fence. So basically, those units are gonna be sunk down below the grade in that area by almost six to seven feet. And we felt that trying to actually do the calculations for the noise level at the property line was really not required or necessary. However, the, yes, they did request that in the conditions of approval that a noise test be done on site once everything's up and running. As I say, the, otherwise, we basically addressed all the issues in all the letters from everybody.
Okay, why don't we, we don't have to go through all the okay's. Why don't we just go through all of your corrected or conflicted comments?
We had a couple of issues with the front system. We had asked that the system be lowered if possible to keep it out of the pavement, base course section. So it was dropped a foot, which looks like it works with the.
What number were we on?
That's item number three.
Three under the general.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So that, that looked like that worked better. We'd had a couple of comments about whether or not permeability testing had been done under that system, and they had not been performed in that area. They'd actually been performed in the car wash across the street.
Formed right across the street.
Actually, the soils atlas shows that the soils are probably better on this site than they are across the street. So we think the design is, if anything, might be overdesigned a little bit, so. So we were, we were pretty good with that. That was item one, but sort of a related issue. We did make a comment about the conflict, potential conflict between the trash trucks and the vehicular passenger vehicles. We, there was a second loading area added. Basically, this building is in two levels. The back is an upper level, and then the front's lower. They did add a second loading dock to the front, to the lower portion of the site. We recommended that the sidewalk in that, that area be extended around the building to the pedestrian door around the right side, which would also probably help with some of the offloading. The driveway, we still consider it to be steep, even though they do have a little bit of a minimal leveling area. You know, it's, unfortunately, the site goes pretty much straight uphill, and it goes, and it goes perpendicular to the contours of the line of the roadway rather than with the grain, so it's, it's steep both for traffic exiting and also for the parked vehicles along the right side. It's gonna be tough to open a passenger door.
All right, Dave, you know what? I have a few questions on the members rather than digest after. If you wanna jump in, not to interrupt, but to question or expression, am I?
Yeah, the first one's pretty simple. So the crosswalk, sidewalk, what have you, the walkway, is that reflected in updated plans, or is that yet to be added?
Walkway along the street, we have added the proposed location for the sidewalk, which is gonna be on our side of Valley Street. However, after.
So this five fifteen gate is not to revise?
Mr. Quagley, I already talked with Bob McGee, and he said, same situation, same standards as we have it. Leo's Landing, we go in, we excavate out, we put in the base course of gravel and everything for the, for the sidewalk, and then cover it over with loam, so that if at a point when they go to construct the sidewalk down Valley Street, all they have to do is strip the loam off and just pave it.
And I apologize if I wasn't more clear. I was actually referencing the walkway between the loading dock and another area on the site, which I don't know if that's in the plans. I just didn't wanna lose some of the details.
Are you showing that on there?
It's not shown on there right now. I just got the comment sheets back today.
Okay. Okay.
You okay with that, though?
I have no issue with that.
Yeah, it's a 20 feet of sidewalk on the right side.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, Jeff, keep going. This is what it's for. It's fine.
The 4%. For those of us that don't do this every day, how would you contrast that with, say, the entrance here to Town Hall?
The entrance to Town Hall is probably just shy of 4%.
So it's pretty similar to that?
Yeah, yeah. And usually, that's not a problem if the site comes up to Main Roadway. It's more of a problem if it comes down, you know, that if the stop is at the bottom of the grade.
Like it is here.
Yeah, like it is here, yeah.
And like it is here?
And like it is here. Although
Although this isn't as main of the road as
Right, and lower speeds and so forth. Yeah, and the secondary issue really is that, is that, that side parking field along the right side of the site is gonna be kinda hard to park cars, you know, at an 8% slope.
Well, it's about, it's about 6% in at the park.
You know what, although it's important for the TV to see, Evan, we need to see this thing.
Well, I just wondered if you could flip to the plan with the flip to the plan with the
Do you want me to grab a set of plans to have?
Do we have an updated one?
I do.
Oh, great. That would be, that's 515.
Yeah, these don't have the revisions.
This doesn't have the revisions. Do you have a revised date in here?
July 7th with the May, the whole with being provided.
That's what he's looking at. He's looking at July 7th, but we have May.
Does Betsy have a 7/7 date?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe I grabbed the one on
Unless they're underneath that.
No, I don't, no, I can have Mr. Roger. Nope, this is right.
Really? This has a 515 date on it. Oh, maybe that's just page didn't change?
The end of revision block, I think.
Oh, okay. Well, the page we're on, then. Now, the last comment was the 8% grade parking on the right?
Right, yeah, on the right-hand side.
I think, there you go, Betsy.
Just, just
Thank you.
Just from a general design standpoint, you know, it's, it's difficult to park cars sideways. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, basically, in this area, there's, I believe, nine parking spots. The grade from the front to the back.
It's a small handful of spaces, but I figured I'd mention it.
It's, it's about 6%. To give you an idea of what 6% is, this room's about 30, maybe 34 feet long. So 6% is, runs from the floor at that end to the bottom of the chair rail on that end. So, I mean, even though it sounds like it's a lot, when you actually visualize it, it's not that steep compared to a lot of driveways. And, I mean, the entrance off of Route 1A onto Tadechi's parking lot has to be going in at probably 10 to 12%.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
You know.
On the, on the 1A side, not on the 115 side.
Okay, so that, that's comment 18.
Okay. Am I allowed to jump in?
Yeah, sure.
In comment 19, we requested that handicap ramps be extended across the driveway entrance. You know, if you need curb cuts in the, in the vertical granite, just for the radii, you probably need to design that and show detail. They did show the limits of work, which we also asked for. So maybe a couple of spot grades in that, in that location. We thought, you know, at second thought, we thought the 30-foot radii, you know, was probably appropriate. You know, and I think it's actually consistent with what Mastioti recommends.
Right, yeah, I tell, I, okay.
Number 23 again was, was that front infiltration system. The response was that they could do some additional testing at the time of construction. We suggested that might be appropriate as a condition of approval. 24 again was the potential conflict with the trash and commercial uses on the site.
Do you know what? I, and thank you for pointing it out, but I don't see this as a major issue. I see many commercial buildings getting picked up at 7:00 AM before.
It's just the location, in combination with the location and the far end.
That wouldn't be the first spot that would have to schedule around a, you know, a location, much like you schedule daily's pick or drop-off for gas, you know, on a Sunday night or something when no one's around. So I think that can be worked around.
And it's kinda self-regulating, I think, to some extent, that tenants aren't gonna really like it when their clients complain that there's issues where they can't get in and out or something, you know.
And the trash trucks don't wanna be in the full parking lot.
Number 32, we had a question about the earthwork calculations. We suggested that
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, we had a question about the cut-and-fill calculations, the earthwork quantities for the site. We suggested that some backup calculations be provided, if possible, which may affect the, the earthwork, earth removal and relocation permit. We wanted a couple, some additional detail on pipe size and materials for existing utilities in Pine Street.
Where are you now?
That was a couple of different comments, and this is about, this is about the end of it. Okay. And we also requested that, that the benchmark be tied in, you know, whether, whether it's a town, state, or county bound. I think it was taken from the car wash.
Oh, actually, the benchmark was taken off the medical center next to the
The medical center, okay.
Yeah, the, the reference on their plan was the top of the spindle of hydrant right across the street from the
Of Valley Street? Okay, I was looking at
Oh, no, on, on Main Street.
Pine, Pine Street.
On Pine Street, okay.
Pine Street, I'm sorry.
Okay. We requested that the pavement widths be shown for both of those streets, just as a, I mean, they're shown, just not to mention. That's the majority of our, of our comments. I think they picked up all the special permits they need and the waivers they need on their list.
Members, how about it?
Design review board, we're gonna
Yeah, we'll get into that.
We wanna get these questions in first.
Why don't we get the other stuff, and then we'll get to the DRB.
Looked like you also recommended a condition about verifying the noise from the air conditioning units.
Yeah, I think we discussed that, yeah, yeah.
Evan, based on what you heard and what you read in the comments that you got this morning, is there anything that's, that's in contention between yourselves and the PSC?
Not if, not that I can see.
Okay.
Al, if you're gonna speak, why don't you come up here and grab a mic, please, for record? Introduce yourself.
Al Quagley, applicant for Palmville Plaza. The, I just wanna correct one thing Evan said. I have not spoken with Bob McGee personally. Betsy has traded emails with him on the sidewalk. And what we did was similar to Leo's Landing, proposed that. And I think that was in the spirit with her conversation with Bob. The other issue was the drainage. I, I didn't really get Dave's comment, but I thought he wanted more testing in the drainage.
Was that comment number 23, Dave?
Yeah, I, we suggested it, and I think it was agreed to during, during construction. You do a couple of permeability tests.
Well, I assumed, just like Leo's Landing, that we, we would do it at the time of the testing.
So just a distal head test, a PERC test?
Yeah, falling head permeability, constant head permeability.
It wasn't required on the medical office building, that's just one of the points I was
You know, just as a general point, I think the soils are pretty good. I think the system is adequately designed.
Given the soils that are at the MOB, and given the, what's across the street, and given your grades, I don't think you're gonna have an issue.
All right, so when we left the last meeting, we talked about three issues that we needed to resolve. One was the sidewalk, one was the driveway heading up, and the other one was, I think, the dumpster. So I think, you know, in lieu of closing the meeting last time, I think I addressed those three major issues. I think that's what Steve, when we can try to get our hands around what the issues were, I think those were the three, and I think we have addressed those.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct, but we also said that anything that PSC had outlined, you know, we weren't necessarily putting those things forward at the expense of everything else. So we definitely wanna keep these in front of us, but
Oh, no, I'm not saying we
And you did address it, right?
I think most of those other issues are minor. I think what I was talking about, the three major ones.
Yeah, you're exactly correct.
You know, your comment about, you know, possibly closing, wouldn't you wanna wait to see what DRB has to say and move forward before that happens? Because obviously, this is something that's on every commercial building.
Oh, most definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I was trying to summarize, you know, opposition here.
Prior to us jumping over to that part of it, Walter, do you have anything?
No.
Jeff, you chimed in, anything?
Yeah, I guess I'm still wondering about the driveway, because I think what I'm hearing from PSC is their feeling is that the driveway is still steep. And I don't know if you feel like that is what it is, so you have concerns about safety. I mean, you were talking about it really only being a problem when you're coming down to a Main Street, which is what we've got. So do you feel that there's any more room for improvement, or is this kinda the best we can do?
You know, I think, I think if you can expand that leveling area at all, I mean, that would help. 25 feet is essentially a car, one car length. So even if you have someone, you know, queued waiting to make, make the left, you know, you're still gonna have a steep driveway coming down behind it. I think just, just from an overall site standpoint, that, that was about the steepest place you could put that driveway for the project. So it's, it's problematic.
I mean, Tom brought this up last time, and obviously, Evan, you were presenting. How did we look at it? How did you review it after Tom made those comments last night?
About the driveway?
Yeah, the grades.
Well, actually, I mean, a lot of grading on a secondary road in the town is 1% minimum, 10% pigs. And I had it about 6.3% going in. I did not have a leveling area at the beginning, that was the only issue. Now I've included the leveling area, and it's just that it ends up going up to about 8% up near the top.
Yeah. How long is that? You said 25, is it? I thought I heard you say it was 30?
Well, actually, from Pine Street end, it's about, I believe it's almost 35 feet from the edge of, edge of Pine Street. We're gonna do a way to catch basins up.
I mean, isn't the crux of the issue the traffic that might be coming down from the upper lot, where they could have, you know, head of steam coming down, as opposed to the lower lot, where I think you've got a fairly short distance, and they have to make a 90-degree turn to, to exit? So I, you know, if we kinda hone in on that, is there any other solutions that come to mind to try to mitigate that? If it rises to the level where members of the board feel it should?
Probably one might, thing might be is, just before you get to this entrance exit here, we might put in a speed bump when it stops to try and limit the flow of traffic and control the speed.
Because if it is a dangerous situation, and then the only other one that I kinda circled that I'm looking at is the discharge of surface water from the project. And I know we're not increasing flow towards Pine Street. However, we still would be potentially granting a waiver that allows discharge onto Pine Street. So I'm thinking winter months, I'm thinking ice, I'm thinking steep site onto a road, ice potentially forming, catch basins back in a little bit. Are we creating an unsafe situation? That's sort of my concern with, with the driveway.
So along those lines, you know, what was suggested is perhaps a speed bump, so that you are putting the upper lot and the lower lot at least on the same plane at that point, because the car is coming to the same type of speed before entering that last section approaching the exit. I mean, that's an engineering control that might, so it would help.
I'm not an engineer by any means, but I guess I'm wondering too, rather than a catch, catch basin, do you do kind of a linear drain trough sort of at the apron, rather than a catch basin that's further back that might allow less water to build up, potentially causing icing? I'm not an engineer, I don't know if that's a valid recommendation, but
It looks like it's about 30 feet of the entrance that would be, you know, uncontrolled. And I, and I think what limits it is, is getting it back up into that system. You know, if they discharged somehow into the, into the Pine Street, I assume there's a system in Pine Street. If they were, that'd be one potential
Unfortunately, there's a mortitorium on Pine Street for excavation, so
It's not easy to do, even if there wasn't, right?
It's basically impossible for us to tie into the drainage system.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's a lot, a lot of water, but I mean, to sort of address your concern.
If I could take it to Rocco Plaza, we have a, an elevation coming out of the parking lot there that's about, I'd say, six or seven feet higher than the entrance at the driveway. And that's probably over 50 feet. And we've never had an issue or a problem. So if you can think about Rocco Plaza, you, you travel upwards, and then you take a left into the parking lot. And that parking lot elevation, you know, and I may be off on the, I'm conservative, at 7 feet. I think it's probably more like 10 feet. So you have to exit that parking lot and then head down 10 feet over a span of 50 feet. We've never had an issue. That also drains onto Pine Street, the entrance way there. And we've never had an issue on icing.
How about four kicks? You know, there's a decline coming down onto
They have an incline coming down.
You have a little grade there.
I don't know about the details in terms of drainage there, I just never noticed.
It's awful tough to get, when you have the elevated properties, to try to get that last piece of water back into the drainage system. So I think you've seen a, a lot of projects that have been approved by the town, just the entrance way gets shed to the street.
You know, I think, like a speed bump or something like that, obviously, is always a great traffic control thing, but it's also a maintenance nightmare. I don't know if we necessarily want to, like we've done with Dunkin' Donuts or other concerns around town, if there was an incident, maybe unfortunately, vendor vendors, you know, issues that came up through the police department, you know, would have the right to go back and put it in, because I'm just not a big fan of permanent structures like that, you know, on a heavily traveled parking lot. So I would like to be, the ability to be able to come back and say, you know what, Michelle was right, this is backing up, someone slid out here, time to put them in. But again, that's one man's opinion.
I have a pretty aggressive sanding plan at Rocco Plaza that's worked, I'll find, on that entrance. And to your point, it's sorta driven by the tenants. You know, you don't want, nobody wants to see anybody slide out in the street, even once. It's a liability issue for you.
I don't have any other questions.
Nothing? Jeff, Walter?
Just one other question. There was some conversation about retaining walls. And anytime we talk about the walls, the conversation should take place in terms of, is there a potential for people to be, you know, walking in that vicinity, fall off the wall? I mean, so I, it's kinda difficult, you know, off the set of plans really to get a feel for that. But are there any issues like that that we just need to discuss?
Basically, any wall over four feet high is gonna, is gonna have a fence per building code.
So the waivers will carry that requirement?
Because of the state building code, again, like you said, that's why I didn't bring it up, but, you know, it's, it's a fair thing to talk about is, because I saw, I think it was in the note, it was somewhere between 5 and 8 feet?
Yeah. Yeah.
And as soon as I saw it was above four, so maybe we should have highlighted that. I'm glad you did. Above four feet, there's a fence. I don't care if there's nobody there. So that's the state building code.
Sorry, Walter, if you have anything.
Nothing additional, no? We're just, perhaps, I mean, just one last time, would you summarize the grade, the percent grade as you go up? You start with, with a 35-foot, starting. At 2%?
Starting at the gutter, the existing gutter on Pine Street.
Yep.
You go in at about 35 feet, I believe, and at, I've got it at about 4%.
Is that okay?
Then from there, for the next almost 100 feet, it goes up at 6%. And then for the final, I think it's about 70 feet, it goes up at 8%. And then levels off up in this area into 2%.
Okay.
So at 35 feet approximately, I mean, even our parking lot spaces are nine by 19. So we're assuming that vehicles are at the max 19 feet long.
So you got almost two cars.
So if you're talking a pair of commuter cars, you're talking two vehicles.
Yep.
So.
And 6% is probably about what we've got out here.
He said four.
He said it was close to four out here, according to Dave.
Okay, I misunderstood. All right, thanks.
Is that, are you all set with this part of the show? You?
Yes.
You're all the applicants? All right, I guess part two, Bob and company. Design Review Board, part of the program, folks. Come on up, Bob, you have a lot of comments.
Well, I'm here with David Lapointe to represent the Design Review Board. We did meet briefly with a, a member of the team. We had a series of comments, both architectural and landscape, that we presented in documents that were submitted last week. Basically, we see this building as being a little bit stark and very long, and we asked that it be broken up, both at the roof level and ideally with some masonry treatments vertically at several locations. That was in our notes. And we also asked that the roof level be subdivided or dormers added, something to break up the 145 linear feet of roof line as it faces Pine Street. Those were our comments. In addition to that, we want to note that there was no roof plan and there were no mechanical drawings, so we don't have any knowledge as to how the mechanical systems are going through the roof. There was nothing shown. We think that should be indicated. And so that wasn't in our notes, but it is a comment.
Okay. Who's going to address the DRB issue?
How long is that? How wide is that building? 140?
145.
145. So, I mean, I don't have a problem having dormers up on the top. I think we had Leo's Landing, that was 155 feet. And we have dormers on that. That is a single level building. We had a coupler on it initially. The RV had us take the coupler out. So throwing some dormers on that design isn't a, isn't an issue.
I can't remember, do you have dormers on Rocco Plaza right now?
Yes, we do.
How long is that building?
100, that's 100 feet. This is 100, this is 40 feet long, wider.
Okay, so you could at least address the dormer issue without too much heartache here?
No, yeah, I could.
What about the other vertical elements they're talking about along with the facade?
I don't really have a great understanding of what you mean by the vertical element.
Our issue was that there is a coin unit shown on the first level corner. We're suggesting that may occur two times on the horizontal of the second level and ideally continue up from the first level to the second level, ending at the roof. We think that would add an architectural element. This building is sitting anywhere from 18 to 30 feet above the street level and is very visible. That's issue number one. The other issues that we dealt with was the landscaping, which we felt was ineffective to screen any parking, given what we saw. So we asked for some conifer planting there. That was all in our notes.
Okay. Do you want to address those individually, first the facade, then the landscaping?
I probably want to talk to Evan about the facade on the, on the plantings. I didn't know we were trying to disguise the parking lots. So I think, you know, is a conifer tree, if you put, if you line that up, you won't see the parking lot at all. Is that the idea?
We wanted to see some screen planting along the Pine Street parking lot. Right now, it shows shrubbery, which is on a downslope, which may in fact give no screening whatsoever. So we were asking that, and the deciduous trees, two-thirds of the year will not provide proper screening of any landscaping. That's why we suggested the conifer system.
When we did the medical office building, Bob, because I knew you handled that as well, what did we have placed in front of the MOB?
We asked for conifer trees to be placed in addition to and in replacement of some of the conifer planting. There we had landscaping that had shrubbery that did in fact provide some barrier to the street level view of the parking. Now with the slope, we're not, you're going to see a continuous line of headlights and there's no screening. We're asking that that be rectified.
Al?
How high will those trees grow?
Conifer trees? We're asking them to go anywhere from eight to 12 feet high and periodically along the edge of the Pine Street parking lot facade. And right now, as we see what we're seeing with the grading and with the landscaping shown, we don't believe there would be much screening of the parking lot at all without that. And given the situation, we felt we should make that recommendation.
Thanks. Guys, time in here. I'm all alone.
That's pretty consistent with, with the Design Review Board requirements on other projects, so doesn't seem unreasonable, but I don't know what Al thinks.
Well, you know, this is always a, a little clash, you know? I'm trying to promote the building, get people to visualize tenants, to travel in and do business. Without customers, you can't survive. So there is a, an obvious clash of what the Design Review would want, you know, complete screening, and what I would want is previewing.
True, but the building sits above the parking lot, I mean, it's a two-story building. You're going to see that building whether you have those conifers there or not, I mean, really.
No, I, I get that, but the sign, excuse me.
Anyway, the conifers are compared to even your ground level of Level One, you still have an elevation change of that whole four to 6% from your street level. So I think, you know, they're not asking for a, a complete, you know, close it in so you can't see it, some screening. And I think, again, because of the elevation change, it's pretty significant. You're not going to hide that building. You're going to hide headlights, which I think is preferable for, you know, safety, even in aesthetics of people going by.
Yeah, and, and my concern isn't so much, you know, the building, obviously, people are going to see the building. The sign laws are so restrictive in this town that you can't see any of the tenant signs.
That's.
And so now you ask us as the applicant, how do I devise a way around, you know, having, making sure that people drive by, sitting in a car, can look up at a height for the parking lot, over 12-foot trees, to see a sign on a facade that says, "Small Business X, Come In and Spend Money"?
I understand, but that's something that's not going to get resolved with this site plan review.
Oh, and, but I'm just trying to give you an idea of why I have this position.
Yeah, but again, I think your distance from the street, your elevation change from the street, these trees are going to impact that visual connection at all, at all. I mean, if you have issues with people driving by and not seeing that building facade, it's because the building facade is set back so far and there's such an elevation change. It's not because of these trees are here. So two different issues, I think. And I think the way they're asking for the screening on the corner, more towards valley, clears up your entrance into your driveway, so you can have clear signage there, and they're really asking for screening, if I understand it correctly, more towards the valley corner of the site.
And I wouldn't be opposed to something just at eight to 12 feet. It seems a.
I mean, if that's not a, a nonstarter for you, I think Bob's, you know, brought out a valid point with the headlight shining over because, again, because if there's traffic further back and there's headlights shining this way on, on 115, you know, obviously the board's pretty predisposed to having some foliage there.
It's, I, you know, and I, I may have this wrong, and I only had a chance to read it quick because it came in so late. I, I thought it said complete screening in its verbiage.
I'm.
It says more, provides more screening.
More screening?
Of the front Pine Street parking lot. I mean, it does say significant quantity of conifer trees, but the goal is to provide more screening. Yeah, two times it just says more screening, not complete. So I mean, I, I think their recommendation's both of breaking up that really long facade and you just don't want to start looking like red roofing, you know? And something really long and horizontal like that is going to start to give you that kind of look. So breaking it up vertically in some really simplistic ways of coining and vertical dormers, I think, is a simple and effective solution. And then, you know, strategically placing some trees to provide screening and yet still allowing your signage and blocking headlights. I, I think they're completely reasonable suggestions, and it would actually make the site look much better.
I never said they were unreasonable. I just have concerns.
Are these concerns exclusive to the Pine Street side, you know, that side of the building? I mean, because looking at this, I don't see that much, I mean, maybe because this isn't up to date, right? That's the issue, right? This doesn't show everything that the Design Review Board is.
No, those are new comments.
I have not even seen the comments.
Right.
So there's some trees that I think exist, these are existing trees on here, these pines?
Those are the trees that PSC requested I add on. They wanted all the trees along the furniture. I went out and located every tree on the furniture. And the entire furniture of the property, basically both in the street layout and within five to 10 feet into our property. And I made a note of which trees are going to remain and which are to be removed.
You know, just looking at it in terms of the angles coming down Pine Street, if there were to be, you know, some opening so that at least it would be apparent that there's something of significance in there, without looking at the building head-on, that might be, you know, one way to give you some visibility so it's clear that there is something of significance without necessarily putting a lot of restrictions on the front, the front view. Just looking at angles, they may work to your advantage to do something like that.
And you know, Jeff, it's, I sort of just go back in time a little bit when I do these and I, and I look at, say, you know, after, because the best way to see a project is when it's up and running. And you can, you know, you can look at it and say, well, you know, that was a, that was a good point somebody made, and, you know, that really wasn't relevant. At the time you're talking about them, everything seems really relevant, but once the building's up, you know, and so I look at Rocco Plaza, and we have parking, double rows in front, and, you know, really, all the town wanted was some trees out front and then a series of rhododendrons. I don't ever remember getting a complaint about headlights, you know, going out into the street and, you know, I think the issues are separate. And if we look at them separately and not in the aggregate, you know, sure, the, the building could have some dormers, and I'm all for it, you know? I have them on my other building, I don't have a problem with that. The mechanicals, you know, typically they go on the backside of the, the gable. So, you know, but I, I don't know what the tenants are and the tenants' needs are, so I really couldn't show you mechanicals to say that this restaurant vent is going to go here and, and it's just a task I could never perform right now. You know, and so then I look at the, you know, the coverage, and it's something I'm a little sensitive because I have a problem at Rocco Plaza with tenants and, and the complaints that I've had when tenants leave, that there's a tough visibility issue. And, and, you know, it's, it's true and it's real and it's meaningful and it's money. So I just sit here, not to pick a fight, I just, I have experience and, you know, there's no conifers in front of that building, and I don't think we've ever been in front of the planning board to say that, you know, we've had numerous complaints about headlights. So, you know, I look at this and I say, hmm, you know, I compare it to the other projects and I'm like, you know, do I mind some conifers and some? Absolutely not. I just don't want to start to shield the front of my building and then sit there and go, what an idiot you were for not raising, you know, an objection on that.
Peter, if you don't like, just to be clear, the headlights, I'm interpreting is that from the parking lot looking onto Pine, where Rocco looks perpendicular to Pine Way, the issue would be almost at angle coming down Pine, you would have the, you know, almost a car at intersection, you would see it coming up from an angle. I think that's more light, not so much the lights, just because they're not perpendicular to the road. You know? Maybe I'm misinterpreting what the Design Review Board was trying to get across with that.
There's going to be a lot of lights, that medical office building, the car wash, I mean, that's, there'd be a lot of lights on this street coming out onto 115. I just don't want to be the only project sitting there with 60% of it covered.
Please, Walter.
How about Hill Street, are we going to allow this?
Excuse me? You're going to have to.
Bob?
Have comments up this way, all right? We don't mind if you talk, but can Walter has a comment? And then we'll go to the crowd.
Question for Bob.
Okay?
Bob, if you go back in, in time to the DRB review of Rocco Plaza, what was the situation there in terms of asking for screening of the parking lot in terms of trees or?
I wasn't on the DRB at that time, so I can't comment to that degree. I was on the planning board at that time. The issue here for us was simply that we wanted a little more screening of the parking because with the grade and with the conditions that we saw, we, we felt there wasn't any screening effectively there. An occasional.
Because of the elevation change?
Yes.
Yes.
An occasional conifer tree, a better arrangement of the shrubbery to provide a little bit of screening right at the edge is all we're, think we're asking for.
Doesn't sound like you're asking for complete screening then.
We asked for an occasional conifer tree because there was none shown on our plan, dated 515. The drawings dated 7/7 that were issued, we didn't see them until that night, and we weren't clear whether all of them or any of them were remaining. So we simply asked for some conifer.
Fair, okay, but considering Al's sensitivity to the issue, Bob, no, no, don't go away. Considering Al's sensitivity to the issue, what does occasional mean?
If you had something once every 30 or 40 feet, I think it would be fine. If you had something every 10 to 15 feet, I think that would be overkill. And we didn't know what the existing conifers now shown to us were remaining or not, so it was hard for us to visualize.
Okay, thanks.
How about, oh, go ahead, Dave, hop in. Another member, Dave Lapointe.
So what we were looking for, just to clarify a little bit more too, was, Dave Lapointe, member of the Design Review Board. So large evergreen shrubs along the front of the parking spaces, because as you can visualize that, there's the tray of parking and then the slope drops off. So even when you plant things, they're already going to be down the slope. So when you start off, which they're noted on the plan as only being 24 inches, they're going to be very small to start. That's why we were looking for additional plantings and larger plantings as well, so that at the start, they're starting to try to block some of those, seeing the front of the grills of all those cars along there. And then, as Bob described, then occasional conifer trees sprinkled along the front there as well to try to break up some of that.
Well, I think the definition of occasional is important, and it sounds like we've identified it and both parties are comfortable with it.
Here's what I would suggest, because, you know, trails, trees, shrubberies, I can give you a million planning board meetings that have gone on too long about all of those types of things. Is there any way that you guys can possibly clarify by email, conversation, whatever, meeting, and, and work out a plan?
I don't have a problem. Now that I know it's, it's 30.
And, and again, you know, it may be 30 in one spot, it may be 20 in another, but, you know, a mix and match.
I was worried, I didn't have a great chance to review that letter, so I was just worried that we were going to cover.
Because, you know, there's a lot of people here tonight for other, other business as well, but I think this is something that we could beat to death all night long, and since the AC in this building stinks, that's not something I'm really interested in doing.
And the only comment I would make is looking at the building from the front, I think, you know, having a different standard to the left versus to the right may be legitimate because of the angles and because you've got traffic coming from Route One, and I could.
because of the angles and because you've got traffic coming from Route One, and I could see people passing the building if, you know, you really create an envelope there. So, I would think you would want to have that open so that there's good visibility. You wouldn't see the building head-on, but you would definitely see it, you know, if you were visiting one of the establishments there, coming down that incline, in my opinion.
Is this something that you want to roll over till August 6th, which is going to be our next meeting? Or do you want to just work it out?
It's $1,000 for every meeting, so unless it was something substantial that we had to discuss, I'd prefer not to just keep racking up $1,000 bills.
Well, are you?
That's the fee to the town, not my engineer.
Is this the?
So, I'd like to close it if I didn't get too much objection. I think I can make the, I think I can make the DRB happy, based on that comment, based on the dormers and some of the things they talked about. Probably not with the mechanicals because I have no idea what the tenants are going to be.
Would you have any problem that based on that, we could review the architectural impact per tenant?
No, no. I would have no problem.
Bob? Okay, Dave? Okay. It's your hearing, so you can decide when. All right, yes, thank you for reminding me.
I don't know if you want to talk?
No, all right. Next is Walter. We're all set. Dave, nothing to add? Please speak. Give your name and address, and we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. My name is Miri Gould, G-O-U-L-D, and I live at 46 Everett Street. But I do own property at number four Hill Street, number six Hill Street, number eight Hill Street. And I'm just wondering, is this going to affect us at all? Will we see any lighting or anything? I do have tenants in the building at four Hill Street and six Hill Street.
You can address it up here, and that's something more for the engineer of record. So, Evan, I'm sure you did a...
That mic's broken. Not working.
Basically, all the lighting conforms to the town regulations.
I'm sorry, ma'am. What he's saying is, all the lighting conforms to the town regulation, which does not allow to have it spill off-site, if that addresses that question.
Okay.
And I think the value of properties will increase.
Evan, can you flip over the? That's it. Photometrics. We're going to, Mrs. Gould, we're going to pull up the photometric plan just to show you that there's a separate engineered plan that actually shows the wash of the light and how far it can go. If you want to take a look, take a look at the plan itself. Evan, if you could just explain those circles and things?
Basically, these are going to be the overhead lights and downwash from the lights. Farthest is going to carry out.
She's interested in going towards Hill.
Right there. This is all your property up there. There's absolutely going to be no spillage towards your property.
Nothing towards mine?
No.
Okay. Where is...? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else in the crowd here for Ponville? Why not?
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Ponville. I've been here a lot. I've had a lot to say. And so, I'm just going to say thank you for the very detailed review and the input. It sounds like the DRB components will be worked out behind the scenes. I love landscaping. I've listened to this conversation. I'm sure it will be worked out well.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else? Al?
I'd like to close my end.
Okay.
I'm going to move that we close the public hearing for the review of Ponville Plaza, Valley Street.
Very second?
Second.
Most have been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We don't have to vote. Gina will work on that, and then it comes back to us. Right, yes. So, anyone need a quick break before we move into round three?
I've got a good towel.
I know, a towel would be nice. I don't think you...
I know, it's tempting to open the window, but it's probably going to be swept.
Don't do it. Don't do it.
I know, bet you say it.
All right, okay, I'll take your word for it.
All right, folks. Grab some waters, whatever. Take off that jacket. You're killing me just having it on. All right, folks.
Let's go.
Ready, Greg? Moving right along at 8:30. We have a public hearing for Crown Castle slash Meeting House Road Flagpole Cell Site Special Permit, and this is a public hearing, which our clerk will read the notices.
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 40A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw Section F9A18, that a public hearing will be held on Monday, July 15th, 2013, at 8:30 PM in room 124 of the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, for Crown Castle, relative to a renewal of the special permit for an existing cell tower located on a flagpole at 108 Meeting House Road. The site is located in the B1 zoning district. Reference Assessor's Map 14, Block 41, Lot 10-3. The special permit application and other information associated with this project are available for public inspection in the office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Klasnick. I'll just give you my card for the record. I'm the attorney representing Crown Castle. And it has been read into the record, Crown Castle has filed an application to renew an existing special permit for an existing wireless telecommunications tower that's located at Meeting House Road. Just by way of background, the original facility was approved back in 2001, and the approval was for a fully stealth facility consisting of a 90-foot telecommunications stealth monopole tower. And essentially, what this meant was that the antennas were to be enclosed inside shrouds along with the cabling. The facility also consisted of the development of a fenced area at the base of the stealth monopole for the installation of the radio cabinets that are typically used by the carrier that was developing it at that time, T-Mobile. In 2003, I understand Sprint was added to the tower and received a special permit for that purpose. The tower was originally designed for two carriers, so there are currently two carriers operating from that tower. There's really no additional spaces, I understand, for any additional carriers. So, what's there now is what's going to exist. And then, in 2007, there was a subsequent additional renewal of the original tower special permit granted as well. So, it was approved, finding that it met the bylaw standards in 2001, and then again in 2007. This evening, Crown is just here for a renewal of that special permit. There's not any changes proposed to the facility. It's going to exist as it has existed for the last 13 years. So, we would just respectfully request that this board grant the renewal of the special permit to allow the continuing operation of the facility, which provides, I think, a valuable service to the community through wireless service. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Krasnick, did you say?
Uh, Klasnick.
Klasnick, I'm sorry. Dave, could we get your first floor here?
Yeah, we looked at the drawings that were...
Did you speak up to the crowd?
Submitted in 2001, which basically, I think, showed the former proposal, which had some apartment buildings rather than the condominium units. And the reason I raise that is although it looks like the compound was built in the originally approved location, you know, with reference to Meeting House Road, Roundabout, and so forth, we did have a question as to whether or not one of the condominiums was within 90 feet of the monopole, which is 90 feet tall. We weren't able to actually access the base of it to take a measurement, but I, but just looking at some of the, you know, I looked at Google Earth, essentially. It looked like the last unit might be within 90 feet. And the condos are not shown on that original 2001 plan, so it seemed that there should be some updated survey, at least of that. One of the original approvals, conditions, was for some landscape screening, which wasn't built. It was a number of conifers that were in a mulch bed that were supposed to be planted outside the compound fence, which weren't done. That's item four out of six. And one of the notes talked about the type of flag that was going to be displayed from the monopole. And as far as I know, I don't know, I don't think there is a flag, or has been, at least in times that I've been up there. And that was, that was, on the original plan, that was noted as General Construction Note 24. I don't know if that was part of the approval, so.
So, the flag was supposed to be there?
Yeah, there was either supposed to be an American flag raised in Lower Daley or a town of Norfolk flag, which I guess you can leave up overnight.
But, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, and then our last comment was just the 24-hour emergency number that's supposed to be posted on the fencing, whether or not that was current information, just because, you know, the carriers have changed ownership. And that was it. That was, I guess.
Just so the crowd realizes, I know there's a lot of people from the condominium complex here tonight. You'll all get your opportunity. How things normally work, they present, our engineers, we talk, we make a mess of it. You guys clarify. Got it? Okay. Walter?
Well, let's see, I was up there today, and the shroud around the top of the monopole has been removed, perhaps has been removed for work. The top section, let's see, the top 40 or 50 feet is exposed. You could see the antennas. Are you aware of that?
Thank you. Yes, I stopped by today as well. I wasn't aware of it prior to that. But typically, that is just the servicing requirements to get access to the antennas. So, the idea would be that once the servicing is complete, the shrouds would be reinstalled. I guess I should note, and I don't know if this board is aware, or folks in the audience are aware, but Crown Castle recently closed on the T-Mobile towers. I don't know if you saw any reports of that, but they purchased a good number of assets at the end of last year from T-Mobile. T-Mobile was the prior owner, would be the correct term. So, Crown Castle has only actually been involved with this site since the beginning of 2013. So, in regards to your question, the shrouds will be reinstalled once the servicing is complete.
There were two other notes in Mr. Bullock's letter to you folks, which you have seen, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. One was the absence of the shrubbery around the fenced area, which was never installed. I know that was not your original responsibility, but now that you're the owner, you represent the owner, what is the owner's plan to install a shrubbery?
You know what? Can I jump in here first before you answer? I just have one question for him, just for clarification. Do you have a ground lease there, or are you, is that property owned?
That property is held by an easement, actually, from the property owner.
Okay, so you basically are, you own the structure, you don't own the land?
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, my question was, is there a plan that you're aware of to install a shrubbery that was originally requested as a condition of the original special permit?
Yes, I've reviewed that with my client, Crown, and they're aware, obviously, that it hasn't been installed. And we reviewed the prior decisions, and clearly, that was a condition. I think it talks about 23 evergreens, so certainly, that's something that Crown is prepared to do. I mean, as a condition of approval for this special permit, same condition that was, I guess, existed since the site was originally developed, certainly.
You okay, Walter? Jeff, fire away.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't familiar with the decision because the decision predates my time with the planning board, but my sense from just looking at it recently was that it looks unfinished. So, I mean, hopefully, we all agree that the situation there is not acceptable going forward. In looking at the decision, because I think this is a useful document, I'm going to be going through it here this evening again. I've made a few notes, but there are things relevant to certainly the things that David has brought up, as well as Walter, but even things like ADA access and some of these things, I mean, it seems like there's some pretty significant conditions that were overlooked, and I don't know if even those types of conditions were...
I'm sorry, did you say ADA?
Well, I mean, it's part of the requirement. So, you know, we definitely want to use this as an opportunity to take a fresh look at this and make sure that the installation is what it should be in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, I mean, I would emphasize, this is an unmanned facility. The only one who would visit it would be the service techs. So, ADA compliance is not something that should pertain. It's not a public building open to public accommodation. So, these are, this is private property that's fenced and secured pursuant to the decisions. So, that's usually a very specific exemption that's even included in the plans, that this isn't something that's subject to the Americans with Disability Act.
I mean, you talk about it being secured, consistent with the decision, but I know that was one of the things that was raised by the building commissioner, evidently, that something was screwed shut. And so, I think it's going to take a pretty detailed look at everything at that site to get it right. And I'm not sure we're going to get there this evening, but that's just my initial thoughts.
Is that okay for now?
Yeah.
I think it's in generate.
Yeah, I think we'll need to supplement some of the comments from PSCU with some of the others from the town. To me, safety is probably the most important thing with these cell towers. We have cell towers located at our campus, and the fact that it's not locked is just like a zero tolerance for that. And then, the posting on the sign is really, really important as well. I know you guys are new to the game, or Castle is, but, you know, if you see any signs of tampering with the gate, if there were ever an emergency and need access to the gate, or something going on in the gate, you got to have current information there. So, the fact that those things, you know, aren't being adhered to, it just screams at me that, I think, rather than just coming here and saying, will we extend your, what yours permit, I think I would have liked to see Castle show a little bit better preparation in terms of what's going to be done to improve the conditions that are up there, because I think it's very unsafe, I think it's very sloppy, and it needs a whole bunch of improvement.
If, just to address the one question about the signage, I did post the 24/7 signage information.
Which is nice, and it's going to be a good temporary fix, and, you know, probably keep our fire chief Cole off your tail in the short term. But, again, this is going to be a little more involved. Greg, can you have?
I just, I mean, there are definitely comments here that should be addressed, and, you know, I think they should be for the newness.
You know, originally, Mr. Klasnick, I understand that you're new to the game with the new owners. But, yes, this is a 2001, but it was also part of a much larger site plan approval. And at that time, a lot of the reasoning, a lot of the landscaping, a lot of the planning around it also included aesthetics. And quite candidly, and again, it's not your fault, but when a special permit is granted, it gives us the authority to reach a little further, okay? That's the nature of a special permit. You wouldn't be here if you didn't understand that. I think it looks like a war zone. I think it's almost, it's beyond bearable, the way that it has sat there for this long. Some of it is due to the former operator-owner, Lessey, of that site, and some of it is due to the person who you leased from, okay? But, the fact that it looks like that, and it has morphed over the years, when it was originally sold to us as, quite beautifully, a nice flagpole, and now it has morphed into solely a monopole with probably as nasty a... solely a monopole with probably as nasty a landscaping situation around it, and at the time, it probably got overlooked, it probably stood through, but that was before forty-four families moved in there. That's not going to happen a second time, not with this board. So I think what we need to do is to hammer out exactly how we're going to clean up that site, and not only within your little square, but around it, to make it palatable for not only the forty-four families that live there, but also to abide by the original orders of conditions, and one of them is flying an American flag, because that's how you sold it to the town, not you. It was thirteen years ago. So that's where I stand, comment-wise, I speak for myself, not for you. And I was involved in the boards back then, from ninety-eight on, so.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman.
Tonight anyways.
Yes, thank you first for noting that my client is new to the game, as we have said.
First comment.
And I understand it was part of their due diligence that actually prompted the filing of this application, as it was evaluating this portfolio of sites, it noted that this was something that needed to be accomplished. So what Crown has done, and I think in good faith, is to come back before the board for the renewal of the special permit, with an understanding that a lot of the conditions that were originally imposed were not fulfilled. And as I had indicated already, and reviewed the comments from the engineers, certainly, the landscaping as originally approved is something that Crown is willing to accept as additional condition, and actually, this time, to implement the process of actually doing the plantings. I mean, I guess I would be cautious, I did drive up to the site, it looks like there's quite a large area there, and Crown obviously doesn't control the majority of that, they just have their area that's essentially fenced.
The lessor does, though.
Yes, I can't speak to that, because I don't represent them. So Crown is, you know, is prepared to comply with the original conditions. I would suggest, in regards to the flag, the way I read that original decision, in any event, was that if it were flown, that it would be an American flag or a Town of Norfolk flag. The concern would be, with an American flag particularly, is that it can't be lighted, so you'd have to have someone go there and raise it and lower it, and every day, which is not something that is practical for Crown to be able to do.
You know what, I think realistically, and I won't get into the engineering aspect, we hire someone for that, Mr. Klascan, but you know what, we seem to be able to pull that off on Pond Street, on our recreational area, with the advent of solar capabilities, I don't think that that's hard to do, to satisfy the U.S. Code regarding the flying of flags at night.
Mr. Chairman?
But that's a separate issue.
I think also, one of the subsequent permit renewals, there was an allowance to allow the flag to be lighted, too.
Why wouldn't you?
I know.
But, go on, Mr. Klascan. Again, I'm sorry, you're walking into this, but this, long before Crown walked into T-Mobile's office, these things have been festering for all these people who I'm sure are going to want to talk tonight.
No, no.
And they have a right to, because you know what? It's a wreck up there. There's curbing, there's stone, there's loam, and they've been disrespected, and that's the way I feel, again, as one member. We'll take a vote as a board, but I don't think you're going to find too many dissenting attitudes.
No, no, and I understand, and I don't know what more I can say at this point, other than Crown is prepared to comply with the plan, with the conditions of the original approval. As I had said, we would look at each condition as proposed by the board, and work with the board, and work with condo owners, to make certain that the site is brought up to a condition that, you know, is deemed to be suitable by the town and by the condo members.
I appreciate your willingness for cooperation at this time, if the board pleases. Can we hear from someone from the condo association, or anyone else that wants to speak? Greg, can you come on up and grab a, you can talk in this mic here, because the other one's not working. Greg, pull those plans out of the way.
I'm Ray Snaris, I'm chairman of the Norfolk Town Center Condominium Trust.
Grab a seat.
We did send a letter to the, to the board in advance, so that we would not be a surprise. We've had a chance to speak originally to the chairman of the zoning board of appeals on this issue some time ago, advised us that it's really now within the purview of the planning board. Much as has been said here, we certainly support areas that we have certainly recognized, it's the landscaping issue. I think you very adequately described, Mr. Chipman, as to the condition of it. The rocks that are in front of this tower, probably all can't be removed, but probably can be covered, and more than just some trees put in, some decent planting that would sort of match in with the rest of the condominium complex. People who drive into that portion of the complex certainly don't get a very good look at the property and what it really represents. The top of the flagpole that was recently worked on, I think was addressed, that it is going to be recovered, we were hoping that would be the case. Replacing the flag, the American flag, is not only from the standpoint of how it was addressed in the permit, but just from a, from a citizen's, from a resident's standpoint, it was there initially when most of us moved in. We do recognize that the, that the requirement in the original permit, or that the prohibition against lighting in the original permit was there, but I wonder if that prohibition was for lighting that went beyond just showing a light on the flag. Yes, it did say that a town flag could be shown, but I think most of us know that anywhere we go, there isn't a flag flown higher than the American flag. And the highest point in town, I would think, the town would like to see the American flag flown.
And that is the highest point in Norfolk?
Yes, it is. And to have a flag on that that people could see, even at my time, be fantastic. A single spotlight on a flag like that is probably not going to bother anyone. Yes, it would require a change, perhaps, to what you previously had approved, but we think it would be appropriate, and certainly, the residents would have no objection whatsoever to adding some lighting. There is one additional area, we have just been reaching some resolve with the developer, with other issues, that I think you indirectly referred to, Mr. Chipman. We have taken on the responsibility of finally paving, putting the final paving on the roads within the condominium complex. It appears that the property that is involved here is on one of those internal roads, and we think that it would be appropriate, certainly, that some share in the cost of that final coating of asphalt, certainly in front of that particular property, by the current lesssee would be appropriate. We have to go to an expense to put all of that in, and it's their only access to their property, so it would seem to me that that would be something that we would like to see happen. But those basically are the issues that I think the association is mainly concerned about.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this issue? Come on up, Gil. Say your name, address, you know the routine.
Gil Axberg, and I'm a trustee also of the condo association, and I live at number ninety-three Meeting House Road, and I pass that site every time I go to my house, as well as fourteen other people that live up in that circle, and it's disgusting. We were told that we...
Gil, direct it here. You know the rules.
Okay, it's disgusting, and we...
He's just delivering the message.
When we bought, when we bought there, they said that it was going to be, you know, attended to and graded off, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. As usual, nothing happens. We've been through this with other issues with the developer.
Which on, within our purview?
I understand that.
Okay.
But this is. And is there a question I have? Is there a site plan that you are looking at to fix this place up?
I would think, and this is something we haven't discussed as a board yet, because this was just dropped on us, and, you know, and it wasn't going to be, unfortunately, for Mr. Klascan or their clients, an automatic renewal. But I think at minimum, what we should consider as a board, Walter, Jeff, Michelle, is this, is with the same scrutiny that we're giving even new projects, I think this is something that should definitely go through a DRB review. It's required in the B-one and C-one districts in our town, and I think that that is something that's in the capable hands of, you know, Dave and Bob, sitting here tonight on other issues, and I think we need to see that. And I think we need to see more of a global fix to that site, because it's so prevalent. It's developed, we worked with the developer to give him what he needed to do that. Since then, additional growth has come from the other way, on Castle Road. I mean, like everywhere else, that we've tried, you know, we've tried to create these doorways into major sections of our town, this one's a front door. And I think it's important that's done right. And that's my comment.
I agree with you, to facilitate that, because if you put it in the context of a typical project, there's something that's put forward by, in this case, the applicant, to facilitate that process. I mean, because all these folks, I mean, this is something, they have a day job, and they do the best they can to support, you know, the needs of the town on their own time. So, you know, to facilitate, I would think that it's reasonable, you know, you have the original conditions to start with, that we use that as a basis, but I agree with you totally.
I mean, being one vote on this board, I am at no point close to even calling for a vote on this thing.
No.
So, I don't know how the majority of the board feels.
I'm supportive of your idea. I think that it would benefit the town greatly, and facilitate the vote ultimately on the special permit. If you did present a plan that says, we've reviewed the special permit applications, conditions, and we've, we find we are in compliance with A, B, C, D, E, but we're not in compliance with F, G, and H, and here's the plan to fix F, G, and H, and then present it to us, and we will review it, along with our right arm, the design review board, and say, we agree, or we agree, but you need to do da-da-da-da. And once we agree ultimately, then we would probably be comfortable in taking a vote on the special permit renewal. Michelle?
How does that sound?
Good to me.
So just so I understand, so essentially, it would be almost like a new filing, that we would prepare a new, a new plan, ZD set, detailed plans, showing, you know, the landscaping and other aspects of the facility as it would appear when Crown was finished?
I would say that somewhere in between what was promised and what would like would probably make most of us happy.
Well, I think you've heard the majority of the comments, and I understand what's important here, there's probably a half dozen or so that you'd need to address on the plan. But yeah, having a visual will certainly help facilitate the conversation. And I think, to start off with, as David had suggested, that the background for the plan should accurately reflect the location where it is, not an apartment complex, but the true site plan that exists up there, so that it can be kind of grounded in its accurate context.
The board has tried very hard over the past few years to really reach out and support business, but it's a two-way street, I think, and this really does need some attention. I mean, I live in that area, but if I did, I think I probably would have felt that way a long time ago, so we really do need to take some action.
No one lived in that area, Mr. Klascan, at that time, okay? No one at all. It was a Nowhere's World, cutting into an undeveloped subdivision on the other side in the back of Keenypot Development. Now we have homes building up to there, we have townhomes, where forty-four families have built in. The reason why we have renewals on these sites are exactly this, you know, it's got to be a net to catch the stuff that fell through. Unfortunately, there was a big hole in that net, and we need to catch it this time. So, I don't know what kind of direction, what would you suggest, Dave, being our engineer?
Well, I think an updated plan for certain. And again, just to be sure that if that tower does, for whatever reason, topple, it doesn't hit one of the units, that they're at least ninety feet from the base of the pole.
PSC is our consulting engineer with Dave, as well as Tom Houston, the principal. He's always readily available for conversation off the record, which you can feel free to always contact. We want to see you be successful here, but we do want what we were promised, and it's not close.
Well, I mean, obviously, we would never be able to move the tower. I guess I'm, I don't understand the ninety-foot comment.
That was something I heard for the first time tonight.
Because I understand the bylaws speaks to towers under a hundred and ten feet, step back a hundred and fifty feet from the property line. I don't know the distance of the tower to the nearest building, but that's not something we're going to be able to change, so...
It should be identified.
Yeah, it's a good start, just to identify it. You know, this updated plan, I mean, normally, it'd be an as-built, but I think in this case, it's going to be an as-not-built, because it was never really completed. But if you reflect that, you know, in engineering drawings, then we have something to deal with and see how we can deal with those types of issues.
I think there was a 2007 as-built that was presented at that time.
Let's see, do we have a plan?
I have the 2007. Just so I understand what the board's asking.
Yeah, not that phase. Unfortunately, I've got these. See, this is the site itself. So here's the unfinished circle. This goes into John's.
Show us the fossils, it doesn't show the units.
Right.
That's the issue.
I mean, that's the reason why we need an as-built, and an updated as-built, is that it'll pick up all these concerns and issues, safety and otherwise. And realistically, are we going to say, no, you're going to have to move your pole, or cut it down five feet? I don't think that is a realistic move on our behalf, so that's not what we're going for. I think you could go a long way, providing you're properly insured, and I don't know who's within that ninety-foot range, but you could go a long way to engendering some goodwill into, I think, not even so much as your site, but it does need work, as the lessor's site. This is going to be, this is going to be an issue for us. It's a rat hole, and they don't deserve it. And it's a big, big issue, not only with us, but, you know, you see places like that, even people that don't live there treat it that way. They'll dump trash out, they'll, you know, because it's just a, it's a general degradation, and it's not fair, and it's not right, and it is T-Mobile's responsibility. Excuse me.
No, I was just presenting that. I was just presenting that, there's no problem preparing a new site plan and going to the design review board, if that's what was suggested, and then coming back before this board with something that works for the town and works for the folks at the condominium.
What do you think is a reasonable timetable to get this going? And the reason why I say that, I mean, if you've got folks, I mean, it's summertime, I mean, that's probably when it's the most noticeable. You know, there's certain enforcement action that's not enforcement by this board, I mean, that's enforcement by Mr. Bullock, the building commissioner, so, I mean, to avoid that and try to put a charge in this, I mean, you probably need to seek some approvals from your company and move this thing forward, but what are we looking at?
Well, they'll have to contact an A&E firm and get them out there to take a look at the site, develop it, work with your engineer to come up with a reasonable plan. Then we have to go to design review, right, and then come back here.
Design review is part of our process, so we'll just keep this thing going. We'll continue this hearing at your choice.
No, I understand, of course.
But John Glosser, who was a local engineer who did all of Mr. Borelli's work, is right in Walpole, and I'm sure he still has it, he can pull this stuff up, and he knows our rules. So that's probably someone that would be the quickest way to bring, hopefully, our common goals to fruition, so...
I know that Crown is motivated to work with the town and to get this resolved... I know that Crown is motivated to work with the town and to get this resolved, and we understood that the site was deficient. We came in here with the understanding that certainly the landscaping and other, the site was incomplete, acknowledged to be incomplete, and so...
To be honest with you, I see a crew in two days, and you could lift this thing into shape. I don't see a lot of work here.
Well, we don't have your approval, but if, if we did, I mean, I think the idea is to get a plan that's approved by this board and then do the work subsequent to that.
That's, that's where we've got pushed to.
Yes, no, I understand. So, Crown's, you know, very motivated. I guess I hesitate a little bit without talking to them about a specific timeframe, but they can turn around plans very quickly, and we can get them into this board very quickly and move through the process.
Because the site hasn't changed.
No.
Secondly, the board's going to weigh heavily the other concerns of the residents, and that is, you need access from a roadway standpoint. So, we're going to probably address the requests and look for an equitable solution on the roadway issue as well, because you just can't drive through the woods and come up to your, you know, to service your antenna. You know, like anybody else, when we, you know, when we develop a site, everybody's responsible for their own roads to get in there. So, that's something I, at least this member thinks is a fair, fair request. I don't know how it's going to develop, but again, I think you need to quantify it and see if it's something that's acceptable to Crown.
Let me throw this out here for the board, and if it's unreasonable, just say so, but to avoid a situation where work can't start until the springtime, I mean, is it reasonable to request that plantings and things that that takes place later than this fall, so that, you know, this can be addressed before, you know, almost a full year goes by, you know, into next spring? You know, because I think Bob Bullock is looking to us for some recommendations as well, based on the, the conditions, and it actually has, and the decision, it has, the planning board, at its discretion, can inspect on a regular basis that, that site and report. So, I mean, just so that we, sometimes it's good if, if we're giving you some clarity so that you can give that clarity to your company, because lacking that, then it may fall into, you know, this long list of priorities, but maybe if we put some type of timetable, now, this isn't, this board doesn't make enforcement action, but, you know, I would think that that would be at least taken into consideration by the building commissioner. So, look at it one way that you can avoid a $300 per day, potentially. I mean, I can't make that commitment, because this is an, you know, enforcement organization, but does that help you? I mean, that, that clarity, to give you something to work towards?
Well, I think I can take back what the wishes of this board are to my client. My concern would be, we have to go through a process to get to the point where we can do the work, and that isn't entirely on, within my client's control. Some of it's, you know, would be driven by the town's actions and how quickly the engineer is able to look at the plans and how quickly we're able to get through the design review process and how quickly we're able to get through the planning board process. So, I mean, an aspirational goal of, in the fall, is certainly something that I would communicate to my client, and they would understand that that's what we're working towards, and I don't see that as being, as being a problem. I'm not a, an arborist, so I don't know if planting trees in the fall is a good idea or a bad idea. That might be another factor as well. It's a good idea?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I'll remember that the next time I'm landscaping. But yes, certainly. I mean, Crown, I was told to come here to, to work with the town. We understand that the site's incomplete and that it needs to be remedied, so I'm eager to get back to them, tell them we've had this conversation, we need to get started working on a plan so we can get something in front of the town to work towards these issues.
So, we technically have to extend your hearing to a date of your choice, and our next meeting is set for August 6th. Would you like to come back to us at August 6th, or would you like to go beyond that?
I think, here's what we're looking at, because you're probably not familiar with the site, other than a quick drive-by and a lot of legalese, given your background. The site hasn't changed, there's not a lot to it. Fixing it is more of a DRB landscaping issue more than anything, and a couple of the other little issues that the fire chief and building inspector, you know, and John Glosser will have this, because they, you know, they submitted this separate and apart. It was, it was put in there as a cash cow for them, even before they did all the other. If I'm remembering right, Bob, and you were probably on the planning board at that time, and maybe Dave was too. So, this is not, it may seem overwhelming to you, and we apologize, but I don't think it's all that overwhelming for them to bring this into compliance.
That's, that's why I suggested, because I think once you're rolling in the process, you'll see it will move pretty efficiently, but you just got to kind of keep it rolling and set some milestones to reach.
So, do we want to continue until August?
We have a date set up for the 6th for our next meeting. We don't have one past that yet. We could always put you on the agenda, and then you could always continue from there, just send Betsy a note, if we weren't ready. But we need to put you somewhere, because unless you want to close...
No, no, I think continuing to August 6th, and then I can get Crown motivated and working on everything to get ready for that date.
You know what, we want to see, we want to see a beautiful site with a flag and you making money pumping out your signals. And, and that's, you know, we have a common goal here. So, and I think that would satisfy the, you know, Town Center condominium folks as well. Betsy, want to give them a time?
I don't think she wants to.
I'm thinking, hold on. During the 8 o'clock?
You're first on the list for the 6th, so...
That, that's fine.
I'm going to move to continue the public hearing to August 6th at 8 o'clock.
Second.
Opinions are made, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klascan.
Thank you, Mr. Chipman, and the board.
Everyone else?
Thank you.
It's getting hot in here.
Yeah, it is.
Getting... Yeah, you know what, we're going to take about a three-minute break to get some water and stuff like that.
Butter outside, that I use in here.
Right.
Oh, man. Power suggestion.
And all humans, so...
August 6th, could we run a...
I do.
It's a power suggestion, right?
Sure. You know what, can I?
Have you been up there? Have you been up there?
Not in the last three months, but I was there last spring.
It's an extra coffee.
I don't think it's gotten any better.
All right, Dan, thank you.
Maybe if you give them a 12-year head start, they'd catch up with it.
We can't do anything till something comes to you folks.
You know what? John Glosser can pull it together.
I agree.
He has all that information.
He probably has it anyways.
Not for me, man.
And you know what?
Take me a day.
A big company like Crown, he can probably double his bill, too.
Ah, yeah. Who knows?
And then, and then, you know...
Do you have enough land for this?
David and I have actually one last question, and that is, there's a project coming up, which we have documented review. Well, it's dry.
Transport. Well, that's also evidence. We ended up...
You have no architecture, et cetera. What are we going to do?
I will, I will drop, I will drop a note to Evan and ask him about architectural stuff.
Yeah. It'd be a complete setup.
The sad thing is, you know, that's exactly what we wanted to put there, too. You know, that's a great project for us, too.
It is.
So...
But, you know, they got to finish the documents.
Right.
Couple of weeks in there, it's a long time.
We're talking five, six weeks, so...
She's living at 242 Gettum Street, too, along with Al Kevi.
All these non-residents.
High cars, you should see the back high car.
Because the kids must be thrilled to have the pool there. Doesn't your mother have a pool? Oh, okay, so you're not there all the time?
No, we're bouncing back and forth. No herd in there. We broke a three-year-old, she was so upset, she just wanted to move away. Now, she's like, "All right, I'm ready to move into the new house. Can't we just do it? What are we going to do?"
It's going to be awesome. That's a great meal.
It is a great meal.
You'll have a, you'll have a blast there, so...
Yeah.
How old is your older one?
Twelve.
What is that?
So, she's going into eighth grade. She's finished seventh.
So, you're having a good time so far, bud?
Nice.
Yeah, I know it is. I did want to come back in.
Ben is just starting seventh grade at CM, and then his two older brothers are also...
Vacation already, look at that, huh?
Yeah, that's a little sun-dried, sun-dried, which I...
He went to, he went to... Nephews of him? Nephews of yours?
Yeah.
You must know all of them from Boy Scouts. I know a lot of them. Oh, not, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and it should be in Betsy's notes, to that effect.
Okay.
Bring it in, please. We want to keep you happy, Betsy. Are we ready?
Ready.
Okay, folks. All right, folks, thank you for coming. We're back after a brief recess, and since it's a little after nine, the next, the next item on our agenda is Pin Oaks and a proposal from our earlier meeting a month or so ago, representing?
This microphone is working.
This microphone's working. You come join us. Have a seat.
Oh, thank you. Just have to turn it on.
Much better room than the other room.
Thank you. Not as cool, but...
Not as cool. Introduce yourself and your address.
Yes, I'm Barbara Greenstein. I live at 15 Margot's Way. I'm one of the trustees on the board of Pin Oaks, and I will give these out. Just for everyone.
These ones, this?
I think it is.
Yes, yes.
Oh, we have color pictures.
Oh, you got...
Color pictures.
Well, okay.
Doesn't happen very often.
Barbara Gee gives us color.
You may have, you may have, like, the original, there's a cardboard in here.
Wow, look at that, yeah.
I think the chairman should have that one.
I was going to give that one to Betsy.
Yeah, you get that one.
Why?
It's a cardboard original.
Cardboard? Mine is.
Me, too.
You got cheated, is that?
I got cheated.
Okay, everyone's got their stuff?
All right.
Carry on.
We presented our safety concerns to you on May 28th, highlighting the increased vehicle traffic and excessive speed on our roadways caused by the creation of Wildwood as a throughway. Your board asked that we create a plan to mitigate the problem. You suggested the use of speed bumps and signage as potential solutions. We listened to your advice and prepared the plan, supporting photographs, diagrams, and other source material attached. We will install two speed bumps on the Pin Oak side of Wildwood. The attached diagram shows the placement of the speed bumps and two warning signs saying "Slow Speed Bumps."
Yep.
Okay. Yes. For your information, the first two photographs depict a likeness of the speed bump layout and the spacing between them. The third picture simulates the location of the speed bump warning signs by a resident standing with his hand on his head. Tonight, so if you want to ask him any questions, you can. A photograph of the speed bump caution sign is also attached. We're not sure exactly what they'll look like ultimately, so we're going to try to beautify them a little. We will also post a 15 mile per hour speed limit sign at the Holbrook entrance and on Margot's Way and Lois Lane. A photograph of the 15 mile per hour is also attached. We have discussed our intentions with various Norfolk town departments to get input on what we were doing, and we were encouraged and supported. So, we wanted to show them what the signs would look like, what the speed bumps would look like. We have sought advice from our counsel, our legal counsel, to ensure that we are acting in a prudent and safe manner, and also what our liability would be, if any. We have sent a letter to our residents requesting their adherence to the 15 mile per hours and asked them not to cut through Rivers Edge via Wildwood. We've sent them a letter telling that we would not cut through their community as well. And we informed our neighbors at Rivers Edge as to our intentions, so that they will know where the speed bumps are and that we are putting them in.
Okay. One second, Barbara, if I may. Dave, did you get a chance to review any of this?
You know what, I did, actually.
Can you speak up?
Yeah, I want to pass a couple of handouts. I Xeroxed a couple of pages from the manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD, which basically talks about sign design and placement, regulatory signs, warning signs, and also shows some detail on striping, speed bumps. I basically just highlighted a couple of things on a, on a couple of these pages. Basically, the, the, the speed limit sign, because there are pedestrians, would be, would have to be two feet from the curb edge, setback from...
In.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with a minimum height of seven feet to the, to the bottom of the sign, which is, which is shown here on that front page.
It's this one right here?
Okay.
The ones you circled there.
With the, you stand in there like this, it has to be two feet in...
From the curb.
And seven feet for passage, because of, you don't want someone having to step out into a roadway, because they're tall and they could, you know, hit the sign. So, that would be the god process.
Or they're visually impaired and they walk into it, not seeing it, or...
On the, on the second page, there's a, they have a discussion about speed limit signs and how, and how speed zones are established at the bottom of, the bottom of that page. Basically, they're, they're, other than statutorily set, they should be established on the basis of an engineering study that has been performed in accordance with traffic engineering practices, which should include an analysis of the current speed distribution of free-flowing vehicles. So, basically, once the, the proper speed, which I guess has been chosen as 15 currently is, is designed, then they actually show how the signs should look. So, it would typically be an R, on the next page is an R2... There is also a speed hump sign, and you can, which is on the chart on the following page, W17-1, and it shows the dimensions on different types of roadways. And you can substitute the word "speed bump" instead of "hump" in that as well. And then, basically, oh, and also for speed humps, and I didn't Xeroxed that page, the, the, the warning signs are supposed to be 100 feet minimum from the actual bumps. Yeah, yeah. And, and then I guess on the last page, there's, there's a couple of different options for, for actually striping the pavement on, directly, immediately on either side of the speed bumps, which just shows different types of arrow, arrow designs, specifically speed bumps that don't have crosswalks on them, so...
Now, Dave, many of these parameters that you pointed out are for public roadway as opposed to private roadway.
Right, right.
So, they would more be of a, say, guideline basis on a private development?
Yeah. I mean, this is, this would be typically what, what would be mandated by the Federal Highway Administration, but for different types of roads, including, you know, rural.
And many of the items, I completely agree with, you know, like Michelle said, a visually impaired person, will someone step out in the roadway? I don't think that, I don't know what your setback from signage was to the speed bump itself.
I think it is about 20.
So, you know, there's some of them, I don't think that's realistic...
by the Federal Highway Administration, but for different types of roads, including rural.
And many of the items, I completely agree with. You know, like Michelle said, a visually impaired person, someone step out in the roadway. I don't think that, I don't know what your setback from signage was to the speed bump itself. So, you know, there's some of them, I don't think that realistically, given the short span, that those could be met.
I mean, that 100-foot distance might be more appropriate on the placido side.
On the interstate.
A hundred feet's not that much. 500 feet would be.
There is a curve in that road.
Yeah, yeah.
As you're coming around, and we had residents, we had a curve here, and they stood on the area before the curve. So that as they.
Turn your mic on, Barbara, please.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It is on. They actually stood before the curve coming around to get the placement so that you could see it as you were coming.
One of them wasn't working earlier, so that might be the one, yeah.
There you go. Take that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Again, we had a committee. It was quite the scene, as you can see from those pictures. But we had someone stand before that curve so that we would know exactly where to put the placement of the sign so that you could see it as you were coming around the curve, because it could be a dangerous part if you couldn't see it.
Did you do that walking? You just had someone on the curb, like, walking?
We actually had someone standing before the curve, someone at the curve.
Did you do it driving?
Yes, yes, with a car.
There's a picture of an SUV on one of your.
Yes.
We used the biggest vehicle.
Should just wait for the FedEx truck.
Dave, is there any feedback on the distance between the speed bumps, the 22 feet? Does that seem right?
Yeah, I couldn't really nail down a standard for that.
I think what they did also is, if you look at that picture, that was the largest vehicle we could find within Pin Oaks. And there was plenty of room to go over one speed bump, have the vehicle there, and before you went through the next one.
I mean, you mentioned that you went to your, I'm assuming, your association council on this and things like that.
Yes, we did.
Okay, I thought I heard that. I think just, you know, given the feedback from Dave, you know, there's no skin in the game other than to advise us, advise you. You know, maybe sharing some of this data would be helpful with them just, you know, so you don't have some unforeseen liability. I don't know if it applies. It doesn't seem like it would necessarily in a private road, but I'm not gonna make that call for you. And it's, again, is provided for your use.
Absolutely.
In our digestion, in order to make this, you know, site plan change if you so request it, so. And that's something what I'd like to hear from, I guess, the members at that point. Jeff, Walter, Michelle, Craig?
Yeah, I'll preface this by saying that I think the folks have done a great job here. You know, we normally don't get the type of documentation we've provided, and I can see a lot of thought went into it. So don't misunderstand the comments that I'm gonna make because they're purely from a liability standpoint. Because I think from a practical standpoint, it seems like you've done a nice job here. So, Dave, with that in mind, just from a liability standpoint, what gaps do you see between what's been proposed? I mean, we talked about the signage where 100 feet is even beyond, I think, units that are well ahead of this, you know, area. So I'm not sure, you know, some of that would be easy to comply with unless you had a warning and then you had one right at the bumps themselves or something. But what do you see as being?
I mean, the things that jumped out were just the style of the speed limit sign. You know, it's not really regulatory. You know, it's, might be more, might be something you'd see like in a parking lot as opposed to a way. And then just really was the placement of the signs.
I think that if we went 100 feet, if I'm not wrong, you can correct me, would we be on someone else's land posting those? We would be on Rivers Edge land posting that.
Yeah, I think that's probably right.
Excuse me. I'm Claudette O'Brien. I'm one of the trustees. Today I walked up to Rivers Edge, and they have posted a 20 mile an hour sign just beyond our land. Have they come to you looking for any kind of clarification as to what they can do and what they can't do with posting signs? Are they at Rivers Edge?
I'm sorry, but who's "they"?
Rivers Edge. Has Rivers Edge come to you asking if they can post 20 mile an hour signs on their roads, which are very, very close to the edge and not?
I do not know if that is within the original order of conditions for the approval. I'd have to go back. I, you know, I don't want to guess on that, so.
It was just something I saw today as I was walking up there with my dog, that they had decided that they wanted to go ahead and place a 20 mile an hour speed limit with Rivers Edge underneath their sign, posted our way, not posted the other way, not posted towards their people, but posted towards Pin Oaks.
Again.
It was kind of interesting.
I think, I don't know the answer to the question you posed. I would have to look at what the required signage was on the original order of conditions. But also, you know, given the, you know, the concerns, I think, one, it's healthy that, I think they're trying to bring down the speed limit, too. And I believe this should be a symbiotic relationship to accomplish a common goal here, so.
I thought it was interesting.
Saying that it was posted our way and not posted the other way.
Mr. Greenstein?
Yeah, 15 miles away.
Can you take the mic, please?
I'm gonna try to be somewhat of a peacemaker, but at the same time, be very firm. I think Claudette's point is something different than you're getting. And that is, we've gone through the process, and we've been upfront with you, and we've come here, et cetera, et cetera. And instead of feeling tremendously supported after putting this effort in, it feels to me, and I think it feels to some of the other residents, like we're getting a little bit hassled. The signage, first of all, we will comply with anything that makes it safe. So let's understand that. That's our intention. We don't want anybody to be anything but safe that lives anywhere in the area, that comes into the area, and that type of thing. And we'll take your suggestions wherever we can, so that's not an issue. But we've done some checking on our own. This is private property. We're not subject to the constraints of these signs or anything else in terms of doing this. But we come to you to do the right thing, and we're looking for your counsel, and we said that. But please work with us. I think that's the thing. I don't know what Rivers Edge is doing, and I don't really give a darn. But the truth of the matter is, I don't believe you're gonna find that those signs were part of the original, since they were thought of after they came here to the meeting last time.
Chances are, possibly.
And our point is, we're doing what you're asking us to do, so please work with us.
I hope we haven't given any kind of impression that we're not.
You have a little bit in the last few minutes, because I can't explain the feeling. It's like, no matter what we do, we're getting more legalese as though this was a public property, and it is not. It is a private property.
Actually, I've been maintaining that since the outset.
No, you connected the two roads and private property, so I don't, I don't even want to go into that, Mr. Chipman.
Well, I didn't connect them.
Well, the planning board did, and it's private roads and private communities. We're dealing with the fallout, and all we want to do is make sure. I'm gonna tell you, just to show you how inconsiderate some people can be. When we were laying out this paper, there is one resident of Rivers Edge that saw us doing it and drove right where we were standing, over the marked up speed bumps, because it was convenient for them to go through the property at that time. That's the type of thing we're trying to avoid. I don't want to die at Pin Oaks from somebody running me over. That's all. And that's the people, what the people in the community want. We will work with you. We will do whatever we can to comply, but just please work with us. That's just a request. And by the way, we hired a local guy, Kevin, at All Right, because we know that the town has confidence in him. So instead of even looking at anybody else to do this work, we've gone to Kevin because we feel he knows what you guys want in the town and will do the right thing by the town, so I just wanted to mention that as well.
Right. The only reason why we bring up the comment of hopefully having a common goal is because whether you like it or not, the roads connect, okay? And that's all. I mean, I don't know, and I think someone quite eloquently in the last hearing in the other room said, you know, we don't want a Hatfields and McCoys situation. And that's the only reason for the comment. That's all.
And we agree. That's why instead, you know, we did consider the possibility of a suit. I mean, you can always do that. We don't want that. We want to be part of a member of this community. We moved here because of Norfolk's reputation. We just want to be treated fairly.
And I think.
I don't want to get run over.
And personally, as one member, I think that, you know, requesting the modification to the existing site plan, because that is something we do have control over, is what we have recommended, along with do your homework, which you exceeded, and then move forward. You know, prior to that, we're not passing any judgment on one side of the street or the other.
No, I, I.
I just understand that this is obviously a pain point for many people involved, and you just want to bring it to fruition.
It's a fair point, Mr. Chipman, really. If you live there, you'd understand that we're afraid of the speed of cars coming over that hill and coming into our community. We are afraid, and there's no way of, you know, we're working the way you want us to work to avoid any, you know, thing happening.
And we, and we provided, you know, feedback and information from our consulting engineers for you to, just to make sure your tails don't get in trouble legally. That's all.
And we will take it.
Right, and that's all. I mean, you don't have a, anyone here have an issue?
No, I don't think we're trying to resist. I think we're trying to assist. So the only comments that have been offered here tonight are for advice. Think of it as free consultation, that these are just some standards in the industry and for you to chew on and digest. And we're not trying to say, hey, listen, it has to be X number of feet and a sign Y big. We're just saying the industry standard is this way. Use it for your guidance. And again, assist, not resist. Nobody.
We want to go on public record that we're gonna take it wherever we can because we want it to be safe. That's our intention, for everybody.
And that's the intention of the comments as well. If you want it to be safe, then industry standards are designed for safety. So we're just providing them again as a guideline because to try and help you meet your intention of doing it in a safe way, that's not gonna be more harmful than it would be helpful.
Thank you.
At this point, given the information that's been provided by these folks here tonight, do you think it'd be wise for them to request a modification hearing, say, at the next? At which time, I think we explained to you last time that we determine whether it's a minor or major modification. Obviously, we try to avoid major modifications because that's like going through site plan review all over again, notifying abutters and everything else. Just a male alone in a dense housing area like that would kill you. And then, at that point, digest. Do you feel that we have enough information at this point to barely, you know?
I think they've presented an adequate package, yes. I think we have enough information.
And since the, you know, the modification itself isn't on the agenda, so we can't legally act on it tonight, but we could on the next meeting, all we need is a written request from the condo association at Pin Oaks. We would like the board to consider a modification to the existing site plan. How it will happen, so there's no surprises. We, as a board, get together. We actually take a vote whether we consider it a major or a minor modification. And at that point, after that is determined, we digest the data, which we're pretty comfortable with already. Steve's not here tonight, the other member, and we vote. And that's what has, that would have to happen.
The only thing I would add is that the items where there's a gap between, you know, what David is presenting versus what you're proposing, you know, I think that you should just be prepared to, you know, have a reason for your, you know, for your sake and for the board's sake in terms of liability. I know there's some practical reasons why 100 feet doesn't make sense, but I, just having that in writing that, you know, it was thought through and such, I think would go a long way, just in the event that somebody, you know, perhaps through their own negligence, you know, was to drive off the road over there and then try to sue your association, sue the town, whatever. It goes a long way just to show that we did, you know, we did the due diligence and had the conversations, put it to writing, so.
And again, I feel like it's, the liability issue is somewhat limited in the fact that it is a private roadway. And I think that you could probably do a lot more even without us, short of the modification. But we appreciate the fact that you have come to us, worked with us, shown us everything you've done, done a far better presentation than, a lot bigger projects than you'd ever realized. And I would welcome the idea of seeing you guys back at our next meeting if that's something that works for you.
Okay.
Is it clear, Barbara, is it clear to you what they want?
A modification to a site plan.
Yeah.
No, just digest what David and PSC has provided you tonight. I personally think that because it's a private road, I don't think it is, but it's for your edification. I think you should just drop it to your association council. And, you know.
We did, we did go to him. And basically, what they told us is that the, we wouldn't have any excess liability as long as we posted the signs.
Additional liability.
Yes, additional liability, as long as the signs were posted.
Right.
No, he didn't do the job right. Have somebody confident to install it, not just.
Yeah.
Anything further? Dave comment wise?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, you know, approaching vehicles should be safe, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, you know what? Because Betsy needs to have something written for the file. It can even be an email, right, Betsy?
Absolutely.
Can you possibly just request, you know, a modification hearing?
Absolutely.
And just shoot it to Betsy, and we get you on. It's August 6th. That's our next meeting. Does that work for you?
Fine.
So.
This is past our bedtime, I gotta tell you.
Betsy's in charge of the schedule.
We'll be able to work on that.
Do you have PSC's contact information, or, you know, maybe you have a business card or something?
Is that, everyone all set here?
Yep.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I appreciate everyone coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Sure you can resolve this. Looks great.
Just need a second. I'll be right back.
Good night.
Steve saw this thing. I think, if you're inside, I think if you're inside your private property, you can do whatever you, I truly believe. I don't think so. I think they, all of Pin Oaks and all of Village Rivers Edge always planned to be private. They didn't want to be?
Yeah, yeah, it's coming back to me.
Okay.
Okay, folks.
Yeah.
And what happened was that the.
Next on the agenda was a request for site plan minor modification from Ken Brown. He has postponed to August 6th.
Okay.
He wanted early.
Huh? Oh, did he?
He wanted early, too.
Everybody wants early.
I want early.
All right, now is the next item on the agenda, also at 9:15, a little late, is to meet with Lou Patrosi for lot releases and off-site agreements. Lou, come on up. I'm having mic problems. It's best that we're all together here tonight.
We cleared the room.
Oh, you are.
Well, essentially, tonight I'm here to deliver the signed tripartite agreement or secured land agreement that was executed by the board back in May. And as you recall, this is one original signed document. As you recall, this agreement was, there was a provision added to it which made it subject to some sort of an agreement between Wall Street and. subject to some sort of an agreement between Wall Street and the town, relative to some off-site improvements on the internal street. Now, not that I want to, we provided a letter agreement to the town, which I have, let me copy that. This one goes back to July 2nd, which essentially outlined each other company have agreed to do. And quite honestly, I haven't had a chance to speak to Jack Hathaway or Bob McGee, the guy in the room, but late this hour-
Lou, Lou.
Not only can I not see you, but I cannot hear you. I put the mic down over there for you to use. See the one, it's, it's a stand one.
Just sit down.
If you could sit down, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, late this afternoon, I received a, an email with an attachment to it that is similar to what I had prepared, but added some, but changed some things that are not, that are vague and, I'm not quite sure why they're added, for example, they refer-
I mean, we're talking about 3C, right?
3C, right.
Okay, let's cut to the chase on this, because you don't want to be here any longer than we do.
Right, so 3C, if you refer to my letter, I've specifically outlined the items of work that we will complete in order to reduce the amount of work left to be done, so that $25,000 bond would secure 100% of that. And those items that are in there are based on the items that were in the board's certificate of approval and in the bond estimate that was prepared by Bob McGee. So, in the 3C agreement that was provided today, it's very vague, it says this work will be completed as specified in the approved drawings and as defined in the order of conditions. Well, I don't even, I don't know what order of conditions he's referring to, it's a, so, and then specifics will also include communication with the residents living in the affected area as needed. Communication and cooperation between Wall Street and the residents will not be left for the Department of Public, this work will be completed. My only point is that, you know, we've been going back and forth with this since May. I would like to get the three lots released, we've delivered the lenders' agreement, you have a letter of commitment from us that says these are the items that we're prepared to complete, we're, we're prepared to start the work fairly soon, but we, I just don't, I, I don't know whether or not it's, um-
You know what, I think it's, here's the thing, and Bob McGee was first on deck tonight, so he's long gone, probably in bed by now. I'm jealous. All right, is this, is Lou, we're coming down to two sentences, is, I mean, let's, let's sink in here, okay? And I even asked Bobby, I said, can you please explain that to me, okay? Because I wasn't sure, you know, if this was broader or broadening the agreement and things like that. And I just, I think that the best way to handle this, and chime in, guys, if you disagree, is this, is we're so close at this point that if you need further clarification on how we wordsmith 3C, because this isn't our agreement, this is the town's agreement with Hathaway and Mr. Petrosi, okay? And, you know, with feedback from Bob, why can't we move forward on this pending assigned agreement between Hathaway and Petrosi?
Is this, is this Jack Hathaway's language in 3C here in this other document?
I think it was something that once Ja, Jack and Bob were changing, or reviewing and everything else, and finally, after you worked things out with Jack, because you've had multiple communications with him.
It's just been difficult because he's been out and he's got meetings, and it's tough, I understand for that, it's tough for him to get, but essentially, he asked me to draft the letter specifying-
And being a guy that runs multiple departments, he probably shot it over to McGee. Bobby ends up, you know, chiming in, and I think that, yes, you know what, it is a little vague, but if we could drill down to this, so you don't waste any more time, we don't waste any more time, Hathaway doesn't waste any more time, McGee doesn't waste any more time.
Right.
And, I mean, so, is there, is there a way that we can-
Yeah, just-
Take this, no, take this, subject to, subject to a signed agreement between, you know, work that we don't control, which is not going to happen again in a subdivision.
Well, essentially, the planning board can release the lots regardless of the, this site agreement that we're talking about, so-
We made a decision as a board to, you know, and we're not going to back off that.
Right, no, and I've put my arrangement, and as you can see, the two documents are not that, they're too much different, except that they've-
3C, that's the only thing away.
No, there's a lot more differences than just 3C.
All right, let's hear it, Michelle.
It's missing, it's missing item number one.
Which is?
To pay the invoices owed to the Town of Norfolk for inspectional services, plowing and sanding.
Right, but I would have to do that anyways to get a permit, so-
But Bob McGee has brought that up as a pain point, so-
It's missing item number four.
Yeah.
It's, so it's, you know, it's more than just wordsmithing 3C, it's completely different documents. Half of the stuff's missing.
I guess I was drilling in on the actual construction aspect.
Yeah, so, I mean, what Michelle said is true, and I think important to the extent that, you know, we'd be taking some action, actually, this is to be signed by Jack Hathaway, so, you know, unless we want to have a problem with taking some action, then Jack would support. So, what Michelle said is accurate, and what I would say, now, I just speak for myself, is in 3C, if some wording could be put in there concerning the approved drawings and defined order of conditions, that if there were deviations, that they would be presented to the planning board. Otherwise, go down the road with Bob McGee, you know, and go and do what you and he agree to, but, I mean, I think, you know, we should be kept informed if there's deviations. And the piece that is most important to me is D. That in one document, D says that the DPW is going to make a recommendation to the planning board for the release of the remaining three lots, and the other one, it says that we agree to release them. And there's a bunch of other things that go along with lot releases in terms of the conditions, the order of conditions.
Well, let me just say this, I'm making this approach in order to avoid further disagreement. I mean, if we're proceeding along this course, we do the work, we're entitled to the lot releases, entitled to them.
If you're acting in a manner consistent with the order of conditions. At any time, there's certain things in the order of conditions for that entire development that you need to be, you need to be adhering to. I mean, we can't discount those, but-
But it's, it's, I'll give you a perfect example. We, I don't know if you've been up to the subdivision lately, but, you know, we're proceeding along, we put the sidewalk in, we put the Cape Cod burn in, we get a ride by Bob McGee, and he tells us, well, I'm not accepting that burn. And we say, why? It's not a monolithic burn. Well, this, the board's specifically approved the Cape Cod burn on that roadway, and yet we have the DPW telling us that it's not agreeable. So, I can't, we can't build a subdivision with somebody out there just telling us based on their opinion whether or not they like it or not. We're building it according to the plan, we do the work according to the plan and the certificate of approval that's been granted to us. It's not arbitrary, it's not an opinion, it's not up to anyone's discretion. The work is done, it's inspected, and when it's done and inspected, we expect to get our lot releases. Not like in the opinion of the town or whoever.
I mean, Mr. Petrosi, there's 40 some odd, if not more, conditions in that approval, so there's no way that in, you know, one sentence here, you can encompass all those things and basically encumber the planning board to release the remaining lots, you know, I don't know, a year, two years from now, without, without providing-
But that's what, that's what the performance agreement was for, that's what the lenders' agreement is.
No, 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 that's, you have off-site, you have off-site things, you're negotiating with the DPW, and we're trying to separate these things, which is what we tried to do a few months ago. And there's different ways to do it, and the way that we had proposed, which is the way that this started, is that you were going to pursue a bond or some type of assurance, some security for the off-site, and then you were going to work separately with the planning board for the onsite. And you prefer to, you know, work something out, you know, that's a hybrid, and I think you just have to be open to the fact that, you know, we're going to look out for the interests of the residents of the town and make sure the town's protected.
You know, the whole approach is really not consistent with the way things are done in other communities that I've worked in with regard to subdivision approvals. So, it's in the, it's in the, your certificate of approval. You've not required and did not require any security for it, and unfortunately, the parties have changed, the people have changed, and it slipped by me, that's my fault, because if I knew that this was going to be a problem, we would have addressed it right up front. We had arrangements with the previous chairman that you would take, and you would leave a lot held in the covenant as security for these off-site improvements. Now, you're, we've got a new DPW guy, we've got a new board members, and now all of a sudden, you're holding us hostage because you want more security than what we previously committed to. I think it's unfair. We're proceeding along to do the work on the subdivision, we've given you adequate arrangements, we've met you more than halfway, and yet it's still not enough. It's never gonna, it's never enough here, and that's why-
No, I disagree, wholeheartedly, I disagree. In terms of you trying to encumber this board with item D, you know, as expressed on one document versus the other one-
We're just, we're-
And this is the first time I'm seeing now the wording that you have here that basically says that you're entitled to those lots being released if you get through the construction.
If we, Jeff, Jeff, if we posted a bond for $67,000 tomorrow, you'd have to release all the lots, is that right or not?
Well, we would certainly talk to the DPW-
No, that's not-
-doing surveillance, he's legitimately doing audits of the site in terms of whether you're maintaining compliance with it.
It doesn't matter, no.
There's no way I can support this.
Jeff, listen to me, listen to, listen, just listen.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because you want to play this out. We've given you security for the subdivision, $143,000 through this lenders' agreement. The DPW has asked for a bond for the off-site of around $67,000. If we gave those two documents to you, a bond for $67,000 and the lenders' agreement for $143,000, we would be entitled to all of the lots being released immediately.
So, why don't you separate it, the way we started this process a few months ago?
Well, you're forcing me, you're forcing me to do that.
That's what we should do, because it's clear that you and Bob can't get on the same page.
But-
You can't get, I mean, that issue with the curbing could have been addressed potentially if you guys talked about it.
Okay, well, first of all, you know what, I'm not going to start picking apart individual components of any construction detail. That always gets proved out when you want to try to get the road accepted one way or the other. Either it says Cape Cod burn, or it doesn't say Cape Cod burn. Either it says monolithic, which I don't think at that time, it probably did say monolithic, because that's something Bob's been pushing since then, I personally agree with it going forward, but it probably does in fact say Cape Cod burn on the approval, given the timeframe-
I don't disagree with it.
On that.
I don't disagree.
So, you know, using that as, okay, let's talk about this, you know, little battle, but ignore the war, so, let's, you know, let's, let's move forward. Lou, I don't see why, one, getting hold, held to bills that you know and I know, you know, the town can turn around and file municipal liens against your property for anyways for sanding and everything else, is all that hard to be included in any kind of agreement. Secondly, is this, is even Bob understood that this was a little vague, I think he was more concerned with, you know, the, how the road in Winston and the other road, Turner, whatever street it, what is it, Turner, you know, you know, whatever the specs are. And, so, you know and I know, no matter what, the sanding, you know, the snow removal, you're always going to have to pay, because we have ultimate authority, but we own your property, okay? And, you know, the other stuff, you, basically, you've agreed to.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So, I mean, why can't we just, you know, bring me, bring me a signed deal with, you know, with Jack Hathaway's name on it, and so we can just move forward?
It's taken me two weeks to get them to produce that document and send it to me two hours before proposal.
And I understand, we did get this dumped on us, you know, pretty late in the game, too. However, you know, neither here nor there, because, you know, at 11 o'clock at night with crappy AC, I don't want to be arguing about this. I mean, is Hathaway in this week, Betsy?
I believe so, he was not here today.
You know, so, I, guys, I need some feedback. How are we going to bring this to closure? Not to conversation, to closure.
You gotta get two signatures on one piece of paper, right? You have a signature and Jack's signature on one piece of paper. It's either this piece of paper or that piece of paper, or a third piece of paper, right?
Been trying to do that for several weeks. I don't know how you do it, I don't know how you get anything done in this town, really, to be honest with you. I mean, it's just, it's just no, there's no excuse for the way this thing is being handled, just no excuse, all right?
Betsy, can Jack have an appointment made with him? Is he, does somebody keep a calendar where he can call and schedule an appointment with him?
I mean, the planning board has the right to release the lots without any, any of this stuff. We're making a commitment to the board that we're going to do this work, and if we don't do the work, then you folks can still hold us against that when the next lots get released. You're always ahead of the game, I don't understand the problem here. You're always in the control situation, which is fine, it's just that you're-
Things haven't been that smooth.
It doesn't matter, we're not going to get it, you know, let's not backtrack, let's move forward here.
Is there anything on this document, aside from 3C, that you disagree with?
No, it's just vague, and it's just-
Well, it's not vague, I mean, it's basically saying, pay for your plowing, pay for your sanding, and you understand that you're going to pay for it, you know, within 30 days in the future, on top of posting the agreed-upon bonds, because you actually have the same language in here, Lou, as they do.
Right, it's my letter.
I mean, the funny thing is, you know, the big items, the 25, the 15 grand, you're not even fighting over.
Right.
It's the pick you and craft.
That's why I'm saying, rather than chase around these little revisions, accept my letter, the fees I have to pay no matter what when I go to get my certificate of good standing, when I go to get a building permit, same with taxes and all, so those things are minutia that has been thrown into the thing. It's essentially specifying the items of work that we're going to perform by November 30, so that there is no discretion, Jeff, no discretion when it comes to the release of the remaining three lots. These items are done, there's a $25,000 bond, the lots get released. It's not up to anybody's discretion. That's the way it works.
You could look at it two ways, though, if it's just minutia, then just do it.
But-
It can work both ways.
No, it can't, it doesn't work both ways. It doesn't work both ways.
Well, it's not working both ways because it's not-
This is not a discretionary item, the bond is posted, this is the amount, release the lots, that's the bottom line.
To take care of the off-site mitigation separately.
If I post a bond, Jeff, I'm not going to do them for three more years.
I'm just saying-
If you post a bond, what?
If I post a bond for the off-site, $67,000, that work is going to stay undone for three years. I'm making a commitment to the town to do it now, which is what they want me to do.
Tell me, what's the, why are we, you're talking 67,000, and I'm seeing 40?
Because, well, what I said we would do is, we typically would not do the top coat of the pavement for quite a while until the-
Right, well, that makes sense, right.
And that work is roughly around $25,000.
Okay.
We were going to do enough work so that when we were completed, the $25,000 would 100% secure the balance of the work remaining, which is essentially the top coat.
Okay.
And at that time, when everything was 100% secured, we would get the final three lots released, not leave it up to whether or not it's satisfactorily done, or whatever is done, if it's done, it's done. There's no in-between.
You know, and that's, and that, but that's prescribed by the set of plans-
Correct.
-by the order of conditions.
Correct, exactly.
Right, and so, you know, whether it's done or it isn't done, really is in this amorphous- Right. And so, you know, whether it's done or it isn't done, really is in this amorphous idea. It's, it's very defined.
It is. That's why I want it defined. I, I don't, I'm not gonna leave it up to someone's discretion as to whether or not they're gonna recommend, or suppose they don't recommend it to release lots. I'm still entitled to them.
But that's why three C in Jack's, that's why I think three C in Jack's document is better, because it refers back to.
Not better.
The approved drawings and the order of conditions, which is what you're held to for your standards.
But it doesn't say what work is going to be completed and.
Completion of Winston Road.
Yeah, what does that mean to you? I have specific line items that are covered under that provision.
So it's just combined, or something, combine the reference to the order of conditions and include the list of.
Drainage sidewalks, grassroots, grant, etc.
We do them according to the plan. They may get done. We, we have twenty-five thousand dollars to secure the rest.
That's what he's saying, to be completed as specified in the approved drawings. You're both saying the same thing. That's why I don't get why it's an argument.
Only Jeff's arguing with me.
I'm not gonna get involved in this. Enough, 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 enough.
Yeah, I think a few of us put some things on the table. And I just wanna make sure that it's clear in terms of what's gonna get done, when and the kid's done. And in terms of encumbering the planning board anymore than we have to, I'm not interested in doing that, because history's shown that it hasn't been successful. You know, we've had problems and I don't wanna, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh no, we have. We have. I'm not gonna go down.
Can you, can you deliver us a signed document, Jack?
I can't.
Sit there.
I can't, I.
You know, you're working in town. Sit here until, what time does he show up?
Are you kidding me?
No, no, no. I'm asking Betsy. She's here every day.
Must have an assistant.
You know, call Marion and see, I mean, Lou, you gotta be here on a pretty regular basis.
You know how many phone calls I've called, times I've called in the last two weeks, knowing that this meeting was tonight, in an attempt to get a reply.
Call Garrity, he's chairman of the board.
It's just not happened. And, and.
Can you refer to the order of conditions in D as part of the statement that the planning board will release the remaining lots? I mean, maybe that's a way to get at it, you know, so that it's still valid in terms of those conditions, because those are something that should be, should be done. Along the, it's a long project and there's certain things that are supposed to be done. And I think we just don't want to be in a position where we can't enforce those things because something's been agreed to on this document. I don't, at least I speak for myself.
I've never seen this, I've never seen anything like this before, to be honest. We've been doing this for thirty years. This is, this is quite.
So you've never had challenges with any town in terms of.
Hold hostages, the lot releases this way, okay?
I'm not.
And I've been doing this a long time.
Lou, where are we gonna leave this?
Well, I posted the security. If I don't respond, if I don't get a response from Jack Hathaway or Bob McGee within the next week relative to an agreement, then I'm gonna ship this off to my attorney, and that's how it's gonna get, we'll get a lot released.
Which is, you know what, which is not good for, don't walk out, come on. That, that's not healthy for anybody involved. You know that, I know that.
But I don't have any choice. You don't give me any choice.
So you know what, Betsy? Can we, can you find a way to get an answer out of that office tomorrow?
Get them an appointment together, sounds like then.
And just, I don't care if they have to get together at McGee's, you know, Bobby's office up at TPW, and just hash out the language that you can live with. You're not that far off. That's what's driving me crazy.
I need the lot releases. And you guys are holding me, everybody's holding me hostage.
Well, it sounds like you need not just three lot releases, you need the ones in addition to that. You need all of them. You need a commitment. Well, why don't, why don't we work on the three?
We're ready. Jeff, Jeff, some of the work would've already been done now, okay? You're holding me up.
This is the building season.
This board is not holding you up.
You are holding me up.
Oh, no. Now, we're here for a reason.
The board had the right to. It has the right under the statutes to release the lots, and you're not. You're, you're slumping off.
You're suffering.
Yeah. Well, if, if the, if the planning board wanted it separated at the, in the, from the beginning, they would've done that. They didn't.
There's words to that extent that are in the decision, okay? They talk about the offsite mitigation.
It's, it's, it's a quagmire because it wasn't addressed originally. I, I do agree with you.
When we appealed the subdivision and had amended decision written, had we known that this was gonna happen, we would've made sure that that wasn't done.
Well, we would've ensured there were other, other language.
You know what, this isn't history. Let's move forward. Lou, can we find a way to, which I consider you guys not that far off, find a way to define it to both parties' success?
Set up a meeting. I'll be there.
Betsy, is there any way that you can drive this?
Of course I can.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lou. Yep, we have it.
You have the original lenders agreement.
Here, Betsy.
Thank you.
We're in the same place. Thank you, bye.
For the record, Steve, you picked a good night to be honest. Okay, obviously, we aren't having joint interviews tonight, but.
Twenty-third, right?
What do we gotta do about this? This thing's getting pushed along, pushed along.
Jeff and I will both not be here. So it would be you two.
I mean, realistically, I've never seen a successful two boards get together. I've never seen it, you know, happen. It's not that convenient thing to do.
We've done it. We've done it.
It's more of a rarity than a.
It is, but it's happened because you need sometimes to jointly appoint people.
I think maybe the summer is complicating it. That's what's going to be, summer is complicating.
What's, what's the twenty-third? Is that a regular board of selectmen meeting?
It's a bill of selectmen meeting.
Sixteenth, yeah, next Tuesday.
I have it on my calendar.
You guys can.
Problem is this, is in order for it to be a planning board meeting, we need a forum.
Well, Steve can be there.
Okay.
Because these two aren't gonna be there.
All right.
Recations interfering, right?
Speak your concerns. You guys are the ones that are off.
Concerns as far as.
Should we move forward? Should we hold it off? I'm not gonna, you know, subvert any board decision here, so.
Well, I mean, I'll just speak for myself that my situation is even more difficult because I may not be present for the meeting on August, let's see, the next meeting, August sixth. I have a, I think I have a dinner appointment with principals of my company.
You should probably just move forward.
Yeah.
If you have a majority.
Okay. So long as Steve makes it, then we'll plan to be there the twenty-third. Can we get on early, Betsy? Sorry.
We've heard that a lot tonight.
Yeah, six forty-five, actually.
That's what it's scheduled for.
Lou was scheduled for nine fifteen.
But you got a better shot if you're on early.
Okay, we have some other items here. Oh, these are also joint appointments for the, for the CPC and the EDC.
The EDC, they've already done their appointments, so if you guys wanna do that.
So they did those separately?
They did, and I think that they have vacancies on the EDC.
Yes. Well, here's the four members that, that they appointed, and there's, it's a committee of seven, so they're, they're looking for three more.
Any more, anybody knows anybody?
So they already appointed these four?
It's actually reappointing them, because they're all members today.
And we need to act then, right? Or, no, we don't. The EDC appointments, that's not ours, is it?
It's a joint, it's a joint, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Joint appointment by both boards.
Yeah.
Okay.
All of them or a certain number of them?
All of them.
All of them. CPC I don't think is, though.
I don't know about CPC. I just know EDC.
Then we have an appointment. We have an appointment. All right, so how about this? I'd like to entertain a motion to consider EDC appointments of Bob Nicodemus, Laurie Shoal, Greg Merlus, and Emery Battistone to follow up on the board of selectmen's appointments of those people.
Second.
First. Anyone?
So moved.
Okay, second. All right, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, folks, for stepping up. The CPC to use the planning board engineer for the subdivision analysis. They're gonna pay for it. Gonna pay for you anyway, so do we care?
Okay, so that, that's actually a change. So CPC is gonna use their own.
No, they're gonna use their own money.
I think that was always the intention.
They're gonna use their own money, but they wanna use our engineer.
Check that. I'm not sure, because what happened was where the transition from me to Steve, I had seen some emails and I had asked, you know, in terms of precedent.
They're not expecting us to pay for it.
All right, so.
Okay, maybe, maybe we just discuss it, but.
Why isn't even asked of us, huh?
Well, my, my, hold on here, but my attitude is this, is Dave and company are independent contractors. CPC is a commission duly formed in the town. They, they could be hired. They can hire anyone.
Yeah, that's why I.
The only question is if we, if they have to review something, they can't. They can't review something if something is needed on behalf of the planning board. We'd have to then go out and get additional services.
Why? They don't have a vested interest in it. They're strictly doing a review. They're not the.
Oh, they're just doing the review? Sorry.
They're doing subdivision analysis for it. I don't see, I don't see the conflict, and I've dealt pretty extensively with ethics on these types of issues.
Yeah, sorry, I was interpreting.
And the reason why this is a non-issue is because now it says they're using CPC funds. I'm ninety-nine percent certain this started as a request for the planning board funds. Pretty certain.
They always ask for money.
It's a non-issue then.
So it's a non-issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can go out and.
And I'm not saying that's the wrong thing. I just asked for the precedent in terms of getting some experience, but, but that solves the.
And don't feel like you have to come back to us for any other clients.
Just sit here and fold my hands.
Okay, consultant contracts expired in June. Cool, so you're working for free.
Wow.
Board Health extended the engineering contract to ten thirty-one thirteen. I think we've done this in the past, because summer's always like this. I hope I.
Are these annual contracts?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, right.
The last one was a little, I thought we did it longer last time, because.
But you know what? Just to say in sync, because their, you know, Board Health is using PSC as well. I would gladly entertain a motion to extend the existing consultant's contract to ten thirty-one thirteen.
So moved.
Second. Just for the discussion.
Yeah.
Jeff, Kane and I had spoken many months ago now in terms of having one contract, if you will, you know, that the, the two boards would use. And he actually had something from one of the towns because of his municipal experience. And I was quite busy at the time, maybe around the holidays. And then when I finally went through that and understood it and had some notes and questions and went back to him, I think he was very busy. And so, that continues to be, I think, an opportunity is to perhaps get on the same page now in terms of the contract, but that doesn't.
Extending till October and the Board Health doing the same.
It's consistent, yeah.
Betsy always sees it first, so. As soon as we have something to work with, and I'm sure, so that'd be great.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Are you gonna extend both contracts?
No, we've, well, the motion's been made, seconded, and there was discussion. Can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Is this PSC's contract or?
Yes. And is Gino working without a contract? In absentia, I'd like to.
What's the status of the town planner?
I do not know.
I think, I did, I think they may have gotten funds approved for like six months in the, in the municipal calendar.
Yeah, in the budget, it was, it was a half a year thing. So if they, you know, even if they did, it wouldn't be until after the first of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
So why don't we do this until Gino has a, you know, opportunity to fight his own battle, why don't we extend him?
Yeah. Can you extend his till the end of the year?
Yeah, entertain a motion to do same?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I think the planner, the planner is in the budget for January.
Okay, well, October doesn't overlap that.
December thirty-first if they wanted to, but this one.
With Gino, if it's.
That way they would be seamless with the timing for the.
Well, you don't have.
And that doesn't mean.
And you never know if these guys will actually even have someone. We can always extend.
It's just an idea.
Right. So let's keep it consistent with what we're doing with the other engineer right now. So the motion's been made, seconded and discussed. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Betsy, we've got vouchers.
Putting around somewhere.
No. Yeah, I signed some earlier.
Walter, you signed them all, I think. I signed them.
I signed them. Jeff signed them.
You got three?
It must be five or six or seven.
She's our secret squirrel. She doesn't sign anything.
You missed these, Walter. Slipping, Walter. What's going on here?
Well, you, you slipped more in there. That's what you did.
I don't think so. It's okay, it's a rookie mistake, Walter. If I ever get involved with the EDC, you could say the same thing to me.
Yeah, right. You slipped them in there, I'm telling you. I, I did them all.
I think we've got three done, everything. So.
The minute, minutes for.
It's early. What do you wanna talk about?
Well, there's some stuff. There's minutes here for June twentieth, which I reviewed and.
I made some amendments.
Yeah, so these are ready to go if everybody's in agreement with us.
How do I get a big boy pen? You don't probably give me these nice pens.
Do we have those in front of us here, Walter?
It was in the packet.
So I think you have to move to accept your own minutes.
Okay.
We take a look at these.
I, I need to make a motion to.
I think you move to accept your own minutes.
All right, I move to accept the minutes of meeting for the planning board meeting on June twentieth, twenty thirteen.
June twentieth.
Second.
Okay, the motions are made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and did you have to look at something, Jeff? Did you say?
Now, is this one, we already voted on this one.
I thought so. That was, it was before my time.
Okay, it was in the packet because of the business here tonight. Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm familiar with that one.
Could just you vote on it? Because Walter and I both weren't here for that.
Um, you know what? It's not that crucial. We can wait till next meeting. It's only minutes.
Let's see if we can make it a record. Let's push it up again.
Actually, that fan has helped a lot.
It just moves the air. That's what you need. Just move the air, even if it's stale air, it's moving.
Anything further, folks?
Yeah, I got one thing. Back a ways, we got an inquiry, we, the town got an inquiry through the EDC by the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the status of the housing availability in the B one district. The EDC prepared a response which went to a fellow named Bill Raelt. And he very much appreciated what we sent him, which is this short package here with a couple of attachments that, like, like that, showed him what, included the fact that the Kelly property had been added to B one.
Right.
He now says that Mass Works would like to, let's get this right. Mass Works could, could provide funding or a loan for infrastructure programs in the town center. And the district might also qualify for compact neighborhood status towards a zero percent interest loan for, for construction. He is making an offer to come in front of the board, as well as the board of selectmen, and make a presentation on that. Does the board have any interest in doing that?
Why wouldn't we?
That's what I thought. So.
I was corresponding back and forth with him even prior to you guys getting permission for the selection. And I, the guy's just there to be an honest, honest gentleman, you know, to.
We're gonna see, we're gonna see the selectmen on the twenty-third. So I will stick this under their nose at that time, and with your support, you'll be there presumably. And we'll see if they agree, then we'll work on scheduling a meeting and make it happen, okay?
Sounds good.
All right.
Hey, anyone from the inside that can push us for any kind of grant money, that's great.
Yeah.
Now, I recognize Steve isn't here, but do we wanna talk the calendar here?
Calendar.
As far as meetings? We've got one for August sixth. I'm not going to be here. Now, we can certainly do a three-mail, but just so that I can have. As I get something on the calendar, I can try to avoid commitments.
August sixth is a Tuesday.
Let me put it this way. Let me put it this way, I know that this, um, our agenda's gonna get pretty full up. We have a bunch of things coming down the line that are gonna be filed in the next couple of weeks, so, um, you know, I, I think that we need to at least get another August meeting in.
That's okay.
So I would love to see those things planned, planned out. I don't see why we don't go out two meetings, too. Going out these one meeting at a time is a very tough scheduling thing, because, you know, a lot of people can turn around in two weeks and have the data for, you know, Dave and Tom, but a lot of other ones say, what, are you kidding me?
Right, yep.
So.
Well, I'm away from the fifteenth through the twenty-first, but after the twenty-first, I'm available.
Um, we could get back on the Thursday train for the twenty-second. How does that fit with people?
Works for me.
So we'll go from this, oh, August sixth to August twenty-second, and project out that way?
Now, you brought that up when Betsy wasn't.
I know, I was just gonna say, Betsy's not here.
No, she's away, I think this would, that week, um, the twelve. Hey, Jeff, should they be back by the twenty-second of August?
It's a Thursday. She's not liking you very much.
Bring him to the meeting.
Yeah, Joe would love to come.
Bring us in the room.
Why, what are you doing on the twenty-second?
Meeting again.
Having another meeting.
Why?
'Cause we like seeing you.
I was thinking after Labor Day.
No, with all the stuff that's coming in, Betsy, we, uh. How about the twenty, I don't know, the twenty-seventh?
I'll be back, I'm just not any, just not on the twenty-second.
Well, following Tuesday, stay the twenty-seventh, would that work?
That's better.
I can't do that. That don't work for me.
Alright.
It's a question mark for me, I may or may not, I'm not sure, maybe travel.
You're okay for the twenty-seventh, Michelle?
Let's set it, let's have, at least have a start date, and then if we have to move, we have to move. But at least we're two meetings out.
What are we doing, twenty-seventh?
Yeah. Um, you know what, there's something else that I wanted to bring up, and not that we don't consider what you do important, Dave, but I'd like the board to consider, unle- unless it's a pain point between the applicant and the engineers, like, whether we really need to go through, like, things like drainage and a lot of, you know, heavy engineering detail is part of our constant review. Obviously, it has to be reviewed and settled, but, you know, with our, uh, consultant and things like that, 'cause that's part of our bylaws. But, you know, sitting around talking about drainage at these meetings, I, I don't get it, and I've been doing this a long time, Jeff, you have too. I'd like to get some feedback and see what you guys think.
Well, what you're, what you're essentially asking is that the applicant and the engineer get together offline here.
Well, they're gonna submit, they're gonna require, if we get mostly like a whole bunch of okays, you know, um, you know, why do we need to even deal with it?
Well, I understand, I'm ju- I'm just saying that you're asking them to get together offline, and work through their issues and come in here with only the ones that are unresolved.
Right.
Essentially, right?
Right.
I don't know, I, I, um, I don't think we go into it in a very big level of detail, I think we stay pretty high level with it. And for me, seeing the, the big picture, and, and even just learning about all the issues with the development, for me, has been helpful. So I can't always weigh in on it, but it, it also sometimes gives an opportunity to just digest the overall project, 'cause I feel a lot of times we see things here for the first time, and there's so many issues, and it's so complex that just having time to process it also, for me, it's been helpful, I haven't found it overly burdensome, I've, I've learned from it, so I, I appreciate.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll give you what, my, my goal is to find a way to kind of streamline the process for these eleven-twenty nights.
I think you did tonight, actually, 'cause we skipped through the ones that were okay. I think, you know, it's, it, it's trying to provide a balance, and I think one of the things it does, it educates the community as to the types of things that we look at, I think it is painful, and sometimes it's like making sausage here, but, you know, I think people see the kind of scrutiny that we bring, and, you know, I, I think it's good for the town, and, and I think it goes a long way to the credibility. And it ain't pretty, some of these meetings, and I, I realize that, but, you know, I think these projects, you know, they're permanent, and, um, so, I mean, I agree with Michelle, I think as long as we, you do like you did this evening, you skip through, you know, you, you know, we didn't.
I thought I was starting with an easy kill, guys, I didn't know this.
Peter, I, I appreciate your, your, your thought, and I'm, I'm an efficiency guy myself, but I like Michelle, I'm new to the board, and I find these things, uh, helpful to me to get grounded in what the hell's important and what isn't important, you know?
And, no, and, and believe me, I realize that, because, you know, there is a, a learning curve. As Jeff knows, he was on Board of Health with me when I was on there, and boy did we learn drainage, you know? And then you come to the next board, and we're doing drainage again. I, I don't know, it's just, it would seem like, like some of these people sitting out there, they gloss over, you know?
Could we maybe try to encourage more discussion between the applicant and the consultant?
Oh, and I think it happens regularly anyways.
Right, but try to get some of those more okays before we even have the first meeting, they're listed, Tom can go through his, the list like he always does, but maybe we, you know. Hey, the planning board has nothing to be ashamed over the last couple of years, I'll tell you this, because half the time, these guys are into their second meeting before these guys even have a chance to have their comments ready. So I think collectively as a board, and going back the last couple of years, I think we've done a great job moving projects along.
And I think that's exactly the point, though, because and, and no, no faults to our consultants at all, but you're usually getting the information, so you're trying to provide it in, in preparation for our meeting, but they're just getting it the same day as the meeting, so they're seeing, I mean, I agree with you, it would be ideal as they're up at that podium, addressing anything that's unresolved and saying, here's my plan, here's my response to it.
Yeah, we got, we got those Pondview drawings on Wednesday.
Right, and so it's no fault of yours.
It's not you.
It's no fault of yours at all, but again, all the.
We're not assigning blame here at all for anything, what we're trying to, what, what, what I'm bringing this up for is just trying to find ways to keep things moving forward, you know?
I mean, you guys are great, I mean, I, I mean, I remember, I mean, there's times that you haven't had time at all to look at the stuff, you're seeing it for the first time like we are, and then, you know.
Right, but I think it's all the more reason to review them, because it's the first time they're hearing it, too. And so it just, I think it does help move things.
That's fine, alright, I mean.
As painful as it is, I get what you're saying.
I have a smartphone, I can.
And especially the public hearings, I mean, really, that's their opportunity to participate, so they really have to hear some of that granular information, maybe not every.
Well, that's why I was saying, maybe we get through one round, get some okays, but Tom still goes through the whole list of why that was an issue, you know? Goes over and, you know, you know.
So in other words, we're doing a great job.
Or just keep sending Dave.
I don't think he wants to come back, given it's almost eleven-thirty.
You're not still driving to Cambridge, are you?
Uh, no, Arlington.
Arlington, okay. Oh, wow. Hey, uh, one last thing, and I thought we saw something that we shot over our email, was, um, something about, um, paddocks and corrals, trail or.
Oh, yes.
It's in here.
You know, what's, um, it wasn't on the, uh, agenda, but.
I can, I can, I can speak to it if you'd like.
This is more, this is more between the selectmen and them, right?
No, 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 let me, if you, if you give me an opportunity, I'll just tell you what I know.
This is the drawing here.
Um, so basically, what happened was, um, you know, with, with the Toils End subdivision, um, going in, you know, there are trails which, you know, we've, um, supported, they're part of decisions that have since been, um, made on that subdivision. Um, so those trails, um, could have been unaccessible. Um, or if they were accessible at all, the accessibility would have been very limited, it would have been from the area where the pump station is that's being installed. Um, so this was recognized some months ago, and the thinking at that time was perhaps doing something um, along the driveway, which, the new driveway, when it's installed, is it's not there yet, because I haven't been up there in a little while, but I don't believe that street is cut in yet, um, which is going to create um, and, and access, uh, if you will, for driveway for the Toils End property. So when that's cut in, the idea was, um, there would, um, you know, very definitely be some access that we could create, uh, because the driveway permit would be required, and we could have some, the town could have some, and the DPW could have some requirements along those lines. So that's where we left that situation, um, going back a few months now, um, since prior to Steve, um, taking over the, the chairmanship. Now, at that time, um, Pulte did not believe they had or would have the ability to facilitate any type of access, because a lot of the, um, the, the agreements and assurances and stuff had already passed as far as, um, uh, Walter Bailey, if you will, because he's the principal.
Walter Meiler?
Uh, yeah, actually, Howard Bailey, I'm sorry, Howard Bailey. Because ultimately, you know, it's Howard Bailey's horse farm there, so at the time, they didn't think that they would be, uh, or could be of any help to the town in terms of creating, um, improved access to those, um, those trails. Now, in the last couple of weeks, um, it seems like there's some business at hand, and that was my request to them, that if some business came up and they felt that they could facilitate and, uh, and help provide better access, that they consider that before entering into contracts and closing any business with, um, Howard Bailey. And I believe that's what this is, they're saying, okay, here's an opportunity to provide, you know, some better access, and, you know, we just need you guys to jump on it here pretty quick, if, you know, if you're interested. So they asked for PSC to, I guess, uh, do some work, and that's where I left it in the last week or so, that PSC got involved. And I think there was something that came in our email in the last.
Yeah, it was, I.
I haven't caught up.
Tom sent me with these emails, like, I don't know if the board saw this.
Yeah, we have it.
July fifteenth?
Yeah, 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 okay, okay, okay.
Yeah. And, and this, this drawing. And it shows the parcel that, that they're talking about, this, this L-shaped parcel here.
Right.
Which would go alongside that.
Oh, it's, is that?
Yes, he says parcel A right here.
Is that the new street?
Yes. That's the new street, and this would be like, almost like a sidewalk, it's not, but it's like a sidewalk.
Are you looking like the dog leg off Barrington Ave?
Yeah, the shaded area.
Parcel A.
As opposed to, apparently in the, in the language, as opposed to trying to do it up through here, as I understand was the alternative.
And at that time, I discussed that with Pulte, because one of the, one of the drawings, one of the plans, had something that looked like trail access between the lots, and I think we all agree, that's not i- not ideal, you have it between homes there.
Right.
But, you know, if we were gonna be landlocked, if you will, and not able to access the, you know, the trails, you gotta do something.
Right.
And that's when the, the concept was raised about, you know, incorporating it into the driveway permit for access of that way. Now, this is slightly different than that, this would, um, dog leg left, okay, um.
Essentially, it's, it's, his property line today is here, right, and he's giving you a slice of his property. Lot seventy-two, this, this guy here, this big guy.
Yeah, that's, that's Bailey.
Right, and so this is a slice of that lot.
Right.
Right on his, on his property line, that's essentially what he's doing. Doesn't change, doesn't change this plot at all, this plot remains the way it is, it's just that he's slicing off a little slice of his.
And, uh, I guess what's, what's difficult, uh, you know, myself, Michelle and Greg, we actually walked out there with Tom Houston, it's about, what, maybe four months ago or so, maybe longer.
No, it's not colder than April.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Yeah, it was, it was a while, time flies, I'm telling you. Once you get a little older, you find out how time flies.
Tell me, tell me.
Me. So, um, I, what I'm not clear on, because there are some wetlands there, and it even references that in here. So, I mean, what really should be done is someone should, you know, really see what the practical aspects of this are. Um, I guess it can never hurt to have it, but if this becomes, you know, the, um.
Well, you've got your, you've got your elevation grades here. You can see the contour lines. You know?
If this becomes the straw man, if you will, so then it makes it more difficult to do anything with the driveway access to the trails, then I would say we just have to make sure that this is, uh, hangs together, this land here, that this is, um.
I think it, you know what, and based on Tom's performance.
Falling, I know, I don't know why it wouldn't.
Well, it's just a wet, well, is there, is there something referenced to some wetlands in here?
I don't know why they're cutting across like that, not following the, the road contour.
What do you mean?
It's like this, instead of cutting across like that.
It's kind of following, almost like a sidewalk.
What made sense was to just hug the side of the road like a sidewalk, exactly.
Strand more of his land?
Yes, it would.
Well, his property.
He doesn't wanna give it up?
I wouldn't either.
No, I wouldn't, that's why. And you know what, part of it might even be part of. What's that?
What are you gonna do with it, there's a road.
You know what it is, we're providing the access in twelve times a year, so.
So, okay, let me just understand this, the fourth paragraph, let, let's, let's go through this, and I know it's late, but it's worth it, um. Uh, let's see, um. So when he refers to lot seventy-two, where's that on here?
That's the big one. That's the one with his barn on it.
It's a big one.
Or just the riding ring.
Pella Rosa Farms.
Ella Rosa.
Okay.
I mean, it's just an easement over Howard's property, I don't think it really is that crucial, I just saw it as, something that floated across. If it's providing access.
Yes.
So that is the relocated paddocks driveway, that's not the road being cut in, um. This is, this looks like it's the new driveway, it's the planned access.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, the first portion of this is consistent with what we had discussed, something along these lines. This just dog legs left, um.
Cause, yeah, right.
And now it is, it is wet in here, um, there, uh, not necessarily.
Is it wet or is it buffer zone?
Uh, it wasn't too far off the road that it got wet.
I think it's a time of year thing, I mean, depending on the time of year.
It could be, there, there's the, uh, there's a little bridge down there.
Yeah, but are, are we going up or down in this direction? I can't read the damn contrast, can you, can you tell me which way we're going? We're going down.
That's what it was when I got lost, driving a couple of weeks ago. There was grassy there. Yeah, it was here, but then, I think as it continues to drop off, it's almost as you enter the town of Norfolk property.
Yeah, but that's okay.
Yeah.
So, spring hikes, wear your wellies.
The what?
Wellingtons, your wellies, your rubber boots.
I know what wellies are.
Of course, you know what wellies are?
Apologize if you don't.
Okay. Um, I would say, you know, this certainly doesn't hurt to have something like this, the question is, that dog leg, if that makes, you know, this wetlands concern in terms of it being wet, and people having to, you know, without walking on his private property. I think when the time comes to permit that driveway, we may still want to have access along the driveway and avoid, you know, having to direct people on a trail that actually goes through, you know, three, four, five inches of water in the springtime, and I don't know, I mean, without going out there.
I think short of a fence, you can have people walk on this property anyways.
I agree with you.
Well, you could put up a fence or something, then they can't, I mean, so, you know.
But, I, I mean, I think this was kind of a contentious issue, because there's been a lot of back and forth between Walter Meiler, Howard Bailey, Pulte, and, you know, Pulte's kind of holding the cards, you know, because they're, you know, they have the contract and the power to basically, uh, you know, tip the deal upside down. And I think this was probably the highest and best way to resolve this issue.
And, and do all parties agree to it?
I believe so, I thought that's why it was there, um, I thought that, I thought Mark Mastiani. I thought that's why it was there, um, I thought that, I thought Mark Maschiani, um, had come to an agreement with, uh, Howard Bailey, so...
Since the board believes this to be satisfactory, it should advise Pulte who will proceed with finalizing the easement. I don't know.
I mean, can we ask PSC to at least do some due diligence to see what the wetlands issue might be over there? I mean, there's the practical wetlands issue in terms of people walking in water, and then there's, you know, buffer zone issues, I think for certain there's buffer zone issues. I mean, that's one hurdle, the other hurdle is, you know, you know, feel badly if the trail actually led people into water.
But, I mean, there's gonna be a driveway there.
Just stay on the driveway.
How, how wet is to be over...
No, no, this is where, this is where it branches off, see, it branches off.
You mean after it takes a left?
Yeah, see, that goes right into the, and this is where it's wet in here.
Okay, so basically not what the trail, or this easement, but where it dumps?
Right, so you're kinda leading people to a bad end.
I got you, I mean, why not, Tom must be familiar with it, he's, he's current on it.
And the question is to compare that with, um, you know, the driveway, if in fact it was an easement along the driveway all the way. Are we talking about apples and apples or apples and oranges in terms of...
Did we have an easement?
No, but he has to get a driveway permit, so there are some...
And, and that's why we had suggested that, you know, this is all a newly constructed road, it would just make it really easy wa- driveway, while you're doing it to kinda construct this little thing, I don't know, just...
Right, a path next to it.
Topographically, it made sense, construction wise, it made sense, logistically, where it landed, it made sense.
Was that in the order conditions? That he had to give us access? I believe he had to give access.
I think he'd give access, but where and how is not detailed and that's been the...
And so it's in Pulte's best interest too, rather than going in between two lots?
Right, exactly.
Right. Right.
It's a question of whether it's this or the driveway all the way, you know, along the driveway.
So...
And I just...
I guess, I guess Dave, what you could bring back to Tom is the wellie factor, a lack of a better term.
Wellie factor, okay, I will bring that back.
Maybe even take some photos so we can, and I don't mind going out there if you wanna just keep Betsy informed.
They must have been expensive, I've never even heard...
It's, um, about in here, actually things parked, I don't even want to call them vehicles, trailers, but there were a couple of things over here. And it started getting a little wet in here.
It may have been a line item on my last visa bill and I don't...
And so the question is, you know, going in here, now is it that much more wet area to deal with? And then the question becomes, okay, you know, you hate to require people to have to go on a private property in order to access the trails. We should, we should try to avoid, that's not...
On this, on this development, it was planned, there should have been access taken into consideration.
Exactly, just like that.
Uggies.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it goes back a ways and I think, maybe, maybe it was a, you know, mess, um, at that point in terms of the finer details, and there was so much on the plate. Though there, there are trails, the... No, no, though, some of the trails survived back there, some of the trails.
Right.
We walked them.
Selectmen are in charge of trails.
Can I, um...
Yeah, so we don't need to reopen the...
All right, there's been a motion made to adjourn. You can thank Michelle, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.